We need to reset our clock in here, Daryl.
Yeah, do we get the cobwebs off, out of the corners and stuff?
We're just waiting for our city clerk to return and we will begin. Okay, will do. All right, good evening and welcome to the City Council Special Session Meeting of November 17th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Patron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Nash is absent. Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock is absent. Mayor Clark?
Here. All right, before we dive in, I want to remind everyone on the dais that our mics are on all the time. I'm not about to try and figure out all that with you at different seats, no less, and we haven't been here in a while. And we are wearing N95 masks, so please speak into the mic so that people watching from home can pick up all of our questions when you are prepared to ask them. We'll dive in with item number two, Resolution 2021-68, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, giving the Secretary of the Cleveland County Election Board notice of municipal and municipal runoff elections for 2021. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? I bet I could figure out voting.
Mayor Clark, if you would, could recognize Councilmember Beerman, there's an error on the resolution.
Oh, Councilmember Beerman.
Correct.
I would like to offer an amendment to Section 5 to read, whereas said elections aforementioned in Sections 2 and 4 shall be held to elect councilmembers filling ward positions numbers 1, 3, 5, and 7 for terms of 2 years and for Ward 2, the remainder of the term to expire on July 7th, 2022.
Second. We have a second. The motion on the floor is to amend Section 5 to essentially include Ward Seat 2. Yes. And, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The amendment to add the provision for the Ward 2 term to expire July of '22 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution as amended. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The resolution as amended is adopted unanimously.
All right, thank you for that. So everyone, mark your calendars. Filing is December 7th, beginning at 8:00 a.m. and ending Wednesday, December 9th, at 5:00 p.m. Onto our next item, a discussion regarding status of the FYE 2021 Capital Improvements Program Budget in preparation of FYE 2022 Capital Improvements Program Budget and the FYE 2023 to 2026 Capital Improvements Plan. I'd like to recognize our Finance Director, Mr. Anthony Francisco, to make a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We are here at this, this second step in the budget process for fiscal year '21, '22. I know that sounds far off, but we're in it now. We are in the capital budget calendar, the first capital budget retreat. And again, this is a time for council to give input into what you would like to see in the city manager's proposed budget, both for capital and for operating purposes. But we're concentrating on capital tonight. There will be another capital budget hearing on February the 16th. And then the final capital budget will be presented to council on May the 4th of 2021. I know many of you have seen this part of the presentation before, but I'm going to go through it very quickly just for members of the audience that might be viewing on TV or those of you who may not have seen it before. Just some background on the capital budget and capital projects in general. CIP is the Capital Improvement Program, and it is intended to support services of municipal government. Those projects that are included have been identified previously and discussed in long-range master plans, in the land use plan, the transportation plan, the greenways master plan, the storm. Council, in the one-year budget, which is a legally adopted budget, and the five-year capital plan. The capital plan is tentative in the, in the year that the budget is adopted and can be changed in those future budget years, but it is very useful to make those long-range plans for projects that are multi-year in nature and how they might play out over a period of time. The sources of funding for the capital program include the enterprise revenues, the water and wastewater and sanitation funds, the Norman Forward Sales Tax, the capital sales tax, general obligation bonds, the public safety sales tax, University North Park TIF. We get some intergovernmental grants, the room tax fund for park purposes, and some private donations can also be included into the capital program. By definition, a capital project is a project, generally speaking, that has a cost of more than $100,000 and a useful life of more than five years. It's kind of a fixed asset. It is a tangible asset, something that, that has a long life and that you can put your hands on, touch and feel. In many cases, it takes more than one year to complete a capital program. So for that reason, under the state law, the capital project funds are the only funds of the city that are not fiscal in nature. The appropriations the council makes into a capital fund can carry over from one fiscal year to another. That is distinguished from capital outlay. Capital outlay, again, are usually tangible assets, but they have a shorter life and usually a lower cost. These are for such things as vehicles and equipment, computers. Again, we pay for those things out of our capital program, but by definition, they are accounted for in the fund where the fixed asset is going to reside on our accounting books. But in many cases, the funds to pay for those capital outlay items come from the capital fund or from some other source and is transferred in to that other fund, particularly into the general fund or to the Westwood Fund. So here's all of the capital funds that are included in our capital program. I won't list them out by name, we kind of touched on a lot of them. But one thing I would touch on here is the CDBG Fund, which has had a larger portion of the capital program in recent years and is continuing to do so recently with some more grants that we've gotten through the CDBG Fund. The enterprise funds, again, are water, wastewater, sanitation, the sewer maintenance fund, and the new development excise fund. And we'll be talking about those in more detail when we come to a study, a study session that is dedicated to those enterprise funds. Here you see those major sources of revenue into our capital program from the various sources. The last few years, this is, the pie has looked a little bit unusual from previous years in that we have had so many outstanding general obligation bond revenues being booked into our capital program because of the large transportation capital bonds that we have included in our transportation bonds where our voters have approved a rather large transportation general obligation bond program that's being accounted for here. The user fee piece that you see there, again, is the enterprise funds that are being paid for exclusively by the users of those facilities. And then, of course, the capital sales tax and the smaller pieces like the public safety sales tax, Norman Forward Sales Tax, and the sewer excise tax. One thing I would point out, though. Just as we are in the general fund, we're very dependent on sales tax for our capital program as well. The 0.7% capital sales tax is dedicated. The 1/2% public safety sales tax, in some part, goes for capital programs. The university, the Norman Forward Sales Tax is entirely dedicated to capital programs. But just know that that word "sales tax" is in there. So we are just as dependent on sales tax for our capital programs as we are for our general operations. And here's where the money goes. Again, a large part is going to those transportation projects. A large part is going to buildings and grounds. Those are particularly for the Norman Forward Park programs that we have going on in this fiscal year. So again, this is a little bit out of the ordinary for how this pie would look. Historically speaking, the capital sales tax was passed by the voters in 1976, so it's been a very stable source of revenue for a very long time. And I would say that our, our voters in the council at the time and administrators were very forward-looking in dedicating this source of revenue for capital programs. But just know that, like other sources from sales tax, it's not going as far as it used to. Each year when council adopts the capital budget, you re-adopt various policies and guidelines. This is the guideline that you have set for how you're going to use that 0.7% capital sales tax. And yes, Councilmember Holman, I did not say capital penny. There's no such thing as a capital penny. It is 0.7% of sales tax. But the guideline, by guideline, about 27% goes to those capital outlay pieces of equipment, things that we talked about. 25% goes to street maintenance. 36% goes to other projects. But those other projects are areas of things that people deem to be very highly important. Bridges, stormwater facilities, park facilities. Those are those things that we account for as other projects here. And we have the debt service on the things that are backed by, the capital sales tax are accounted for here as well. Right now, our capital fund, and as you'll recall, when you look at the fund summary for the capital fund, we look at all the revenues, we look at all the expenditures, and we have a projection of if all of those things come to exactly pass, how much money would be available for council to adopt or allocate funds to additional programs, to new projects. Because of where we have been with our sales tax collections, this is unusual. But right now, we are in a negative position. There is no money available for new projects at this time. So there will need to be some council actions taken as we go forward in this budget year and as we look to adopt next fiscal year's budget to close that gap. Now, we will have some suggestions on ways that we might do that, but just know that at this point in time, there is no money for new projects. A lot of the project managers and management team members are watching on YouTube and are available on a Zoom call. So as I'm going through and talking about these ongoing projects and proposed projects, if you have questions for them, feel free to stop, ask those questions. They are available to answer them, and they will be answering them by microphone.
Well, Mr. Francisco, we do have a couple of questions in the queue, so you let me know how you want to handle those.
Go right ahead.
Okay, Councilmember Foreman? Well, okay, maybe it's because, is everything off?
Yeah.
Are you Councilmember Foreman?
No, I'm Catherine Walker.
Okay. All right, well, I have Foreman, Patron, and Peacock, and I know Peacock's not here, so.
I pushed it, though. I pushed.
Okay, so.
I'm sitting in Peacock's seat.
I'm Patron.
You're Patron? Okay. Oh, Lord. Okay, we'll go with Patron. Carter. And I will clear this, and then your next, Councilmember Holman.
Okay.
Okay. Two questions. One would be in regard to transportation, infrastructure, funding, and how we have structured many of our projects to capitalize on the benefits of federal matching funds. And so what I'm wondering is, I hear a lot of talk now on a federal level of the possibility of an, of an infrastructure bill that might provide additional federal funding for road projects. Can you, I don't know if the word speculate, but I'm going to use that word speculate, on what impact that might have on our capital budget? And would that be a remedy to bridge some of this two-and-a-half million dollar gap that I'm seeing in this year and next year's capital budget?
Theoretically, it could be. No additional revenues have been passed at this point at the federal level, but there has been talk of that. Yes, our transportation program in particular has been structured such that we try to get as much matching funds from the federal legislation as we possibly can. And what we try to do is have our projects shovel-ready. The engineering design done, the right-of-way done, the, the engineering work and the utilities relocated as early and possible as we can so that the matching funds for construction can be obtained. I'm speaking for Sean O'Leary and the Public Works folks a little bit here, but I've heard enough from them tonight. What I'm saying is true in that the rules of that game have changed somewhat in that we don't get as much readiness points as we used to for those sorts of projects than, than we had in the past. That in particular has some impact, a negative impact, on our 2019 general obligation bond program. And we'll have some detailed information about that later in the presentation. But to the extent that new revenues might be made available for infrastructural programs, then that work that we have done to get our projects ready should put us in a greater and an improved stead to get those, those new federal funds that might become available. And that's certainly something we'd be working towards.
So far, citizens, to ask our members of Congress to support an infrastructure bill would be something that we would see a direct benefit from here in Norman. You would, would you?
Quite possibly.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so when we're looking at a $2.3 million deficit for this fiscal year and a 2.1 deficit for next year, that's part of a big pie, correct? Is it weighted in any particular, or is that just a general?
That's really the 7/10% sales tax and what we do with the capital fund and those available projects from that source of revenue.
So what areas of projects would that be weighted toward?
That's one of the questions that we'll be asking of council. What projects would you consider to be higher priority versus lower priority? So for example, if we have to come up with $2 million or $1 million, would you prefer that of the list of recurring projects that we're going to be presenting later on, do you have a lower priority on stormwater projects versus building and ground projects, that sort of thing?
Versus what?
Versus building and ground projects.
Okay.
Maintenance of existing facilities. Those are the sorts of questions that, that at this meeting in this level in time, council will just say, yeah, we're more in line with reducing stormwater projects. And then staff will get to work on putting together the capital budget based on that general direction from council.
This might be a question, then, for the city manager. Are we currently, right now, pulling the reins in on some capital projects because of this year's fiscal year budget deficit, the 2.3?
Mr. O'Leary is very much aware of the status of funding, and it is playing into the timetable when we'll bring council request for authorization to go out to bid on projects and the pace at which we are prompting and prodding some of our design engineers to either speed up or slow down on the completion of that design work. And kind of the, the magic, the balancing act that comes into play is having those projects in a shovel-ready condition so we can compete when federal dollars are available. So it's just a, a balance that you gain comfort in after, you know, years and years of experience, but very conscious of that limitation.
Well, thank you for your expertise in that area, and I have a lot of confidence that we're walking that tightrope in a, in a proper manner.
As well as being walk anywhere, I assure you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm not, I can't recall if any of the years I've been on council, if we've had a negative in the CIP, maybe. But could maybe talk just a little bit about what we normally or what an average might be that we would have in, to use at this time?
There's been at least once that I can remember. And, and again, what we would tend to do is look to council for direction on the areas that you have lower priority. There's a long list of recurring programs that we would have in the capital program in next fiscal year that we can reduce in some of those areas. And if you say, for example, I mean, and some of them are fairly large areas that we'll be talking about, that would cover a $2 million gap. And so, for example, if you say, yeah, we can reduce sidewalk programs, but we don't want to reduce stormwater. That's the sort of direction that we need today. And then, given that direction, we can make it work. There, you know, again, the difference between having operational deficits and capital deficits is that you can put off a capital project and, and really nobody gets hurt in the immediate time period. Unlike operational deficits where, you know, somebody may be out the door. So that's the difference here. We have a lot more flexibility in our capital program. What we look to council for tonight is just where your priorities are and where we have to come up with $2 million or $1 million, where you would like to see it happen.
Thanks, Anthony.
Councilmember Beerman?
I'm sorry.
I'm probably the only one sitting here tonight that is actually assigned to my name. This question, I think, I think this is maybe part of what Councilmember Carter was trying, was trying to get to. But there's, that fairly significant drop between FY22 and FY23 leaves me to believe that it is maybe more directly tied to a construction project or something that is going to be complete, that we anticipate being completed by FY23. Is that correct?
Yeah, there would be some projects that we have recurring money that has been programmed into fiscal year '22 that has not been programmed into fiscal year '23's plan yet. Remember, we're working on a budget for fiscal year '22 and a plan for fiscal year '23.
Okay, so that number for FY23 could, could be significantly larger once you kind of get through that planning. That's not indicative that a project that is, construction is completed in FY22 means that we will, in fact, only have a $241,000 deficit.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. That was really just, so, and because my follow-up was going to be, is it one particular project? But I'm, I'm sure that it's not really that simple to say that it's just one project or another.
And remember that in that area where we're talking about those negatives, that's only related to the 7/10% capital sales tax. That's not related to Norman Ford or anything like that.
Right.
Dedicated areas.
Yeah, my question was, was going to be whether or not it was more related to the emergency operations center deficit than anything else, but I'm sure it's not quite that easy either.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And Councilmember Foreman? I did press it that time. Is this something that we could use CARES Act funding for? Is this something that would qualify? I don't know if you or city manager can answer that?
Yes, you could. The, again, as we have talked about, the Finance Director's only suggestion is that you not use those one-time CARES Act funds for ongoing expenses. But for any of these capital-related expenses, yes, theoretically, you could.
Are there any projects that are ongoing right now that are in jeopardy? Do you have a list of that, or?
No, we will, we will talk about, there's at least two areas that, that we believe that we can make a significant dent in that $2 million negative without really hurting any program or project. But we would need some direction from council. It has to do with, I'm sure, the mayor and Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Beerman will remember that council directed us to have a reserve within the capital fund balance for the Robinson and Crossroads project in case we didn't get the federal matching funds for that project and had a reserve of capital fund balance for the senior center in case we didn't come up with the senior center funds over a period of time. Now that funds have been identified for the senior center and funds have been identified for the Robinson and Crossroads project, you might release those reserves, and that would open up about $1 million to cut into that deficit. But we'll talk about that in some detail later.
Do you have that list for us now, currently?
Yes, it's in another, it's in a different slide.
Now seems like a good time to keep going. We're getting ahead of ourselves.
So here are some projects that are, that have been closed this fiscal year. And by closed here, we mean that the project is done and all the bills have been paid. It's actually a closed-out project. And that is Phase 1 of the James Garner Project. Sidewalks on 24th Avenue Northeast. The Legacy Park parking lot has been done. And that $17 million CDBG disaster recovery project from the disaster about five years ago has been completed. Here are some projects that the work has been finished, but all of the bills have not been paid yet. I won't list the projects individually, but council will recall that you did a final acceptance on that Vicksburg channel liner last meeting. The Aspen Avenue parking lot, we'll make that payment this fiscal year. And the Interconnect project for the traffic signals on 12th Avenue Northeast. The project is pretty much done, but we still have some bills to pay. Here are some projects that are underway. We talked about the transit and emergency vehicle maintenance facility that we just broke ground on a week or two ago. And I have driven by there several times and amazed at, at how quickly that project is progressing. But that is to the benefit of not just council, but our congressional delegation, your finance staff who freed up all of those funds within the capital budget. But again, that, that's a really good example of how these capital projects can work from a variety of sources. And that's what we're trying to do. The 24th Avenue East widening project is rapidly under construction and, and rapidly progressing. And as you see, that's a $15 million project, two miles of roadway being widened, completing the, the loop around Norman and a, and a project that the traveling public of Norman will, will benefit from for generations to come. The municipal complex renovation is about to start. The city manager came up with the wonderful idea of, instead of having a groundbreaking, that you might have a wall breaking because that is a building that is being rehabbed, rehabilitated, and refurbished and reconstructed. So just like Councilmember Carter, I have done it. My house will hand you some sledgehammers and you can break some of those walls and get that project off and running. That's a $10 million project for the whole municipal complex. Again, it is only partially funded. We had. We had general obligation bond proceeds for the Building D, which is what used to be called the existing library, and for Building A and Building B, but we're going to run out of funds. One of the things that we would like to do is some refurbishments to this building. It'd be really nice if there was a table right here that I could present from and not have to stand the whole time. So, so those are the sorts of things that we're looking forward to being able to do that we don't have money for right now. The 36th Avenue Northwest project. That was passed by the voters in the general obligation bond program in 2012. But construction has not started yet, and we're still awaiting federal matching funds for that. And we have some financial gaps to close on that project. But the managers are doing a great job of identifying those funds through savings and other general obligation transportation bond programs that will be able to move to that 36th Avenue project and to the Alameda project that you saw a moment ago. So, now we move to the status of some projects that are included in the plan right now and that are either underway or really close to being underway. And again, I will call on Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Sturt, or anybody if I am misspeaking any of these projects. You'll recall that the 26th Transportation General Obligation Bond, which is our ongoing street resurfacing program. These are five-year general obligation bonds. It has been a very successful and renewing program. And these are some examples of the railroad, urban asphalt, and urban reconstruction projects that those general obligation bonds are paying for. We spoke briefly about the 24th Avenue widening project. It includes sidewalks and accessibility improvements and stormwater improvements in this general obligation bond program. And it is nearing completion. And personally, as somebody who drives 24th, I can't wait for it to open, but.
It's looking great, though.
It's looking great. We touched again on the 36th Avenue project. The status of that project is, again, awaiting the federal matching funds. But we are moving forward with the utility relocations. And the right-of-way, you've seen a lot of easements for that project on your recent council meetings. And that indicates progress on this project. It's just that dirt has not started to fly yet. The Robinson I-35 West Frontage Road and Crossroads Project is one that we touched on a moment ago. We're waiting a bid opening next week on this project. And hopefully, the bids will come in well. We're in a very good construction environment, and I think the managers are confident that they will. But the Oklahoma Department of Transportation is bidding this project. This is a picture of what will happen as that project moves forward. But again, when we were in doubt about whether the matching funds from the federal government would be forthcoming or whether the matching funds would be available from the University North Park TIF fund to pay for this project, council had a very high priority on making sure that the project would happen even if the federal matching funds or the TIF funds were not available. So, you set aside about $790,000 in the capital fund balance to match those federal funds even if the TIF funds were not available because they might be tied up in court or those sorts of things. Well, now those funds have been made available and actually paid over to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. So, we would recommend that you give us a direction that, yeah, we can go ahead and release that part of the capital fund balance. And again, that would help to solve that $2 million gap. This is a picture of all of the many projects that are underway or planned along State Highway Nine. Once it is done, there'll be a continuous paved roadway of four lanes with sidewalks and bike lanes along Highway Nine all the way from 24th Avenue to about 72nd or 96th Avenue East. And again, this is a multi-year project, but it is progressing very quickly. The Porter Avenue and Acres intersection project. Again, council has been approving right-of-way eneasements for that project. We are about to begin construction on that project, and it should be completed in about nine months. And again, it's been a very long and awaited project. This depicts what will happen with that project as it moves forward and is completed. Remember, this is the intersection project separate from the streetscape project. Here is the streetscape project that's a little bit further behind that project, but construction is expected to start about a year from now. And will take about a year from then. But it will be a very nice streetscaped project fronting on some very important properties, both for the city of Norman and Norman the city. So, a lot of very valuable property along that streetscape area will be moving forward over the next year or so.
Mr. Francisco, if I might, I don't think Mr. Pyle was here when we celebrated the opening of the Lindsay Street Overpass. And I've never thought I would celebrate a highway or just a street opening up, but we did, and it was a whole lot of fun. And so, while we're looking to celebrate wins, these are projects, this as well as the Robinson Street I-35, that have been needed to be fixed for quite some time. I would fully support celebrating that as a community as we continue to invest in our future here in Norman.
The James Garner Project. And this is Phase Two of the project. Phase One has been completed, which is right in front of the Central Branch Library. But Phase Two will go from Acres up to Flood, connecting with Flood Avenue. We're expecting to begin construction in about a year on that project, assuming federal matching funds. This is a Norman Forward project. And as we have discussed, the Norman Forward program does not assume that those federal matching funds would be available. And if it is, that would open up some funding within the Norman Forward program. The Jenkins Avenue project from Lindsay down to Inhofe and right in front of Reeves Park is an ongoing project funded by our 2019 general obligation bond program. We're expecting bids on that about a year from now. And over here, it's going to work. Over here, you see the connection of Inhofe with Constitution that is part of that project. And that will change the transportation landscape of all of South Central Norman. So, so that is a project that has been long awaited, and it's about to start.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes. Both of these projects are ones that I really pushed hard for to get included on the bond. Jenkins was identified as the number-one project by staff. And I noticed on several of these projects, the dates seem to have been pushed back quite a bit from what we've talked about previously. And I understand there's several circumstances that could lead to that. But on this one, it says bid opening October '22, and that's like two years from now. So, I don't know if staff might want to talk about that. We were talking about like breaking ground on Jenkins this, on 2021, actually. And so, a bid opening two years from now is definitely concerning to me since that was the number-one identified project in the whole bond.
I will defer to Mr. O'Leary on that one now. Here's how we're technologically, I am challenged, but hopefully it will work out. They are on Zoom. I know that they're hearing everything that we're saying, and I know that they're able to speak. But here's why I'm hoping that you'll be able to hear them speak.
Anthony, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is Scott O'Leary. I wish I was there with you. But let me try to address some that I didn't hear all of the questions, councilmember Holman. I'm sorry. But what I heard was the question about the bid opening really two years from now. And that is being projected on the basis that we will be successful in securing federal funds to match our GO bond funds. As you know, this project was originally intended to be fully funded with the GO bonds. And we are taking a little different strategy this year with the ACOG applications. And this is one of those really important projects that we think we can get federal funding for, reduce our obligation for bond funds, and move those bond funds to a different project in that program. The downside is we would lose about a year of scheduling time, which is why we're projecting it out into October '22.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. Our, so, other 2019 projects might start before then? Or would this still be the first one that actually breaks ground? I guess James Garner would start before then, I guess, from what I'm seeing. And then Porter as well. But as far as big road expansion projects, are there any that, well, I guess we'll get to that part. But, but I did notice that, that was definitely something that caught my attention pretty quickly because we had talked, again, talked about breaking ground on that this year or this coming year. But I do recall our conversation about maybe shuffling around projects that might be score better for federal funding and shifting some of the local dollars over to projects that might not score well. I do just want to make sure we are, and I have no doubt staff is, but making sure that some of these projects we did locally funded were because we felt they were sensitive surroundings and things like that. And we didn't want to risk federal funds forcing us to do stuff or contractors we don't necessarily agree with or want, you know, that type of stuff. So, as long as we're still okay in those regards, then I, you know, I would, I would definitely still agree that that would be the right path forward as staff has recommended.
Councilmember, if I may, this is Scott Sturt, city engineer. One positive aspect of putting this into a federally funded program is we're now combining the Constitution Street project in with the Jenkins project as part of that proposal and kind of over-matching to get both these up. So, while Jenkins project is slipping a little bit, we're actually pulling the Constitution Street project up. We were starting to see a lot of complications with trying to get those two projects to coordinate together with the time gap that's going to be involved. So, we're really, in some ways, pulling this project together and getting this whole area addressed in a much better and more efficient way with one contractor, one set of plans. And money-wise, we're going to wind up still coming out ahead financially because Constitution Street wasn't ranking really high, and we were afraid that it may not be able to get. It was one of the first projects that was going to get federal funding. It wasn't ranking in that program very well. But this is one thing we've been able to do to really try to maintain the integrity of the program and move that forward.
Appreciate that explanation, Scott. I did see that listed here, but I wasn't, wasn't quite sure. So, I appreciate the clarification that it has been or the two projects have been joined together like that. And I do think that is a good way to go about it and trying to get these both done all at the same time instead of having, you know, five or six years of continuous road construction down there. So, okay, I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
I really appreciate that explanation, Mr. Sturt, because I, I did not remember that Constitution being a part of this project from looking at this before. And what you said makes perfect sense. And I'm very excited about your forethought in combining these projects and staff's forethought. And, and while we're getting a little slow down to get the speed up on the Constitution is, I think, brilliant. And to get, you know, the federal matching component to it and get some cost savings in the long run is just another example of the kind of good work that we're seeing, and I certainly appreciate it.
So, here is a summary of that fiscal year 2016 five-year street maintenance bond program. 100% complete on the fiscal year '17, '18, '19, and '20 projects. And again, those projects have been completed on time and well under budget. A great credit to our project managers. And the final year of projects, which is this fiscal year, are now under construction, again, on time and under budget. And this is the end of that program that was approved by the voters in fiscal year '16. So, the question to council has been and will be, would you like to go for a renewal of that program? Pose that question to our voters this spring. But it's important for it to go before the voters because we would need to close the general obligation bonds by June 30th if we are to maintain the current level of property taxes to pay for that program. So, again, at the same tax levy, we can do a whole new program of projects that have been identified in the same way, given the pavement management system that our Public Works Department has. Whole new list of projects, same amount of general obligation and property tax levy, but it does have to be renewed and reapproved by the voters. My understanding is that there are available voting dates pretty much every month in calendar year 2021. But again, in order to close the bonds by the end of June, we would need to have a positive vote, I'm going to say, by the end of April. So, that's just something for council to have in your mind, and hopefully you'll be considering that here in the near future.
I'll clarify that. We have considered it at our retreat, acknowledging all of the elections that Norman voters will have in 2021. So, make sure your voter registration is current, Norman, because we're going to put you to work in 2021, and this will be one of the issues. It's just deciding on when. We took our first step tonight with the February council elections and April runoff. So, those watching at home can stay tuned for when we'll settle on that date, hopefully soon.
Here is the 2012 transportation bond program that we talked about and those programs and projects that are ongoing. The important thing that I noticed here is the total amount here. $89 million worth of projects that the city is paying for a little less than half of. So, again, it's a very ambitious program and a program that has been very highly successful with those projects that have been completed or that are nearing completion. But again, we're coming toward the end of that program as well. The 2019 transportation bonds is what we just talked about, in particular, the James Garner, Jenkins, and Constitution projects. Looking forward then, this kind of speaks to what councilmember Carter was talking about. It is our objective to maximize the amount of federal funds that we might get to match our general obligation bonds revenues or capital fund revenues for these projects. And as you see, there was a lull in that in our last fiscal year. But because of the matching program that we have going on this fiscal year and the programs that we have proposed for the next fiscal years, we hope that we'd be able to secure in the $10 million range of projects over the next four or five years. And that's our goal. Our program is structured that way. I have every confidence in our Public Works Department and project managers to get that done. But just know that, you know, we used to be able to say, Angelo will take care of it. But we don't have Angelo anymore. But we still have Scott, we still have Sean, we still have good people. Yes, sir.
Just to backtrack to the other, to the five-year, $25 million bond that's up this spring that we hope to vote on in the spring. Because the mileage will stay the same and because of appreciating real estate values, do we expect the total number to change?
We expect the amount of projects that can be done for the same levy to go up somewhat.
Yeah.
The levy, the assessed value has not increased as much as it had in the last few years, but we still expect there to be an increase.
Do you expect a 10% increase?
Except that if we were able to do $25 million worth of projects in the last program, we might be able to do 27, 27.5 in the coming program.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on that too. Just so folks understand, I guess, the history of it. It was first 2006 and then 2011. And then we've renewed it once since I've been on council in 2016. And I think one of the important things that staff has noted about it is that something that's sort of unique about it is that each time that it's come up for a renewal, it's actually increased in voter approval. It's become more popular. And a lot of times, I guess, things be, kind of decrease in popularity usually when they get renewed. This one has increased. And staff really points out that because it's neighborhood streets only, and pretty much only, that that's what people see when they pull out of their driveway, when they pull into, into the house. that that's what people see when they pull out of their driveway, when they pull into the house or the neighborhood at the end of the day. Those are the streets they're driving on, and they can see the results of what they voted for over the years. So this has been one of the most popular and well-received programs the city's probably ever done. So I'm looking forward to putting that one on the ballot, I think. And I'm definitely going to support whichever date we come to a consensus on, but I feel pretty good about that one.
No, thank you for that history and for that clarification. It's important that we do that, and it will not be any sort of tax increase that voters see. And with that decrease in funding, it's important to note that ACOG changed how they calculate how you're awarded. Clearly, we'd figure it out, the mechanism, and then we didn't do so hot. But we did advocate for some changes to that formula, which I think we saw. And I'm glad that staff is optimistic, so keep up the good work.
Of those capital outlay programs that we talked about, one of the larger areas of expenditure within the capital outlay program is for the replacement of vehicles. And we are looking here at the amount of funds that we have allocated for vehicle replacements over the last five years. $2 million a year, sounds like a lot of money, and it's a big chunk of our available capital funds. But when a single front-end loader can cost $400,000, you know, a single tandem dump truck can cost $300,000. Leave alone a fire truck or a bus, this amount of money does not go very far. And we had a vehicle study some years ago that pointed out that we should be spending about $4.5 million per year to keep our fleet up to date. But this is what we have been spending and what we have available within our available capital outlay funds, which is funded from that 7/10 sales tax.
Councilman Petron.
Actually, Mr. Pyle, I feel like I remember at some point that you were investigating about whether to go to a lease program potentially rather than purchasing.
Yes. There are a couple of major leasing companies, and we rent cars from them on occasion when we go on vacation. They do massive fleet rental programs. I've utilized these programs in California. And the availability of even specialized vehicles or even first responder vehicles continues to improve and increase. Their sales group has really slowed down because there's a lot of in-person contact when they come over and begin to do an evaluation for us. So they're teed up, and as soon as we get past the current pandemic issues, they'll be out to take a look at some of our documentation and find out how much money we could save potentially annually on a fleet lease program. And there's an old accounting adage, I'm sure Mr. Francisco heard it in class. You should buy things that appreciate, and you should rent things that depreciate. And that's how they take advantage of those market conditions. When you think about it, one of the largest car buyers in the United States of America is Hertz Rental Car. They've got that system down to a science. So we will be bringing that back to you as soon as their force is available to come out here and join us, spend a little time taking a look at our numbers and making a recommendation to council.
Okay, just as a follow-up, do you think that they would be willing to... Because I don't think the pandemic is going to be over by February, but before our next... If we could have an update, not necessarily hard and fast numbers, but at least maybe get a tentative calendar from them as to when they might be able to...
Absolutely. I'll make that request of them in the morning.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
So now we move toward looking at some of the programs that have been recurring programs in our capital program over the last several fiscal years. Sidewalks has been a very high priority, and we have several different individual sidewalk programs within our capital program. And these are ongoing programs. And again, head nod, yes, you want to continue this as a priority. Or this is something that you could look at as something that we could have some savings in our next capital budget.
I think it would be helpful to know how much we've used of each one. Like the citywide sidewalk projects, since it's 50/50 repaired, does that get taken advantage of?
The 50/50 program, I think, is not, is usually not spent in its entirety. The accessibility projects are. The schools and arterios projects certainly has been last year. The trails project, I think, has not. The horizontal program, I think, has been. So again, we'll get that information for you in exact terms, but just generally speaking, I think it's kind of a mixed bag.
Councilmember Holman.
Just wanted to mention another great program, too, the Horizontal Sawcut Program. It's really is an accessibility program, too, I view, because if you're not familiar with it, a lot of older sidewalks in town, some of them get, over time, become uneven due to tree, you know, tree, not branches, but roots, whatever different things moving around. And you'll have ledges that people can trip over, and it can be very expensive to go in and replace an entire concrete panel. And so this Horizontal Sawcut Program that we started a few years ago, they go in throughout different areas and they level them out. They level out the edges so that they're even with the sidewalk panel next to it, so we don't have to replace the whole thing. It saves a lot of money, and it's really made a real visible impact in core Norman with a lot of the older sidewalks, again, making them more accessible. So I would definitely want to keep that program. But I think we do need to evaluate how much of that are we spending, do we need? Because I think we are looking for savings every, you know, 1,000 here, 5,000, 10,000 there. We've got to look everywhere, I think. But these are all really great programs that I really am glad that our city has. But we do have to look, to kind of evaluate everywhere, I think. Thank you.
Here is a list of all of those recurring programs. The capital outlay piece is $3.7 million altogether, and this is proposed by formula. Again, that 27% of the projected capital sales tax for fiscal year 22. $2.3 million for street maintenance, $1,007,000 for stormwater drainage. You'll see the $1,384,000 for personnel. That is where the capital fund, the capital sales tax, pays for the salaries of our capital project engineers who do all of their work on capital-related projects. And there's also some personnel expenses in there for street maintenance crews that are doing street reconstruction projects, forced labor as it's called. So there are some street and engineering expenses for personnel included in our capital budget. So those are the things that we might look towards if you have some higher or lower priorities that you would like us to concentrate on or de-emphasize as we're preparing the fiscal year 22 budget and looking to where we might address that $2 million shortfall. These are some of the areas that we might look toward.
Mr. Francisco, one thing I didn't see that I bring it up often is, this near and dear to my heart in Ward 3, is faulty bridges. Is that something that, and maybe Mr. O'Leary, if he can hear me, is that something that we expect to be in the potential package going to replace the street maintenance bond? Or is there, I mean, is there a potential project in there for replacing one of the 37, I believe it is, bridges that are scary in Norman, red?
I think that was a question for Mr. O'Leary, but I do know that council's had that discussion and it can be included in that five-year bond program.
Yeah, it just feels like we need to be constantly trying to chip away at this.
As Councilmember Carter pointed out, the, some of the discussions around federal infrastructure funding really did emphasize a bridge component. And we are anticipating if that's what comes out, the city of Norman could be very competitive. We've got some interesting data to demonstrate how bad some of our bridges really are. And of course, our fire chief is very familiar with those, and we can paint a pretty compelling story that we think would make us very competitive for some of those dollars. So always on the lookout for some federal assistance because each one of those projects is just really expensive on its own.
Okay, great. And as a follow-up, if you don't mind, and perhaps in tandem, we've spoken in the past about stormwater projects slash bridges. So perhaps they could be combined into one project to get us either additional funding, federal funding, somewhat like we're doing the Constitution Jenkins project?
Exactly. So those opportunities to address not just the transportation side of it, but the curb gutter drainage aspects of every one of those major capital projects. One, because it's logical, and two, there is no better time to address some of those issues than when you're doing the design and you're able to mess with the grade and really take advantage of one contractor to deliver you a complete finished project. So always on the lookout for that opportunity to grab the storm drain component when we're doing either a street and/or a bridge or a culvert project to improve the situation.
Okay, and if we could, by February here, if Mr. O'Leary feels like that perhaps there's one single project that just can't wait, that please bring it to our attention and let us know so that we can juggle around to make sure that happens, okay?
Sean, is that clear on your side?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing the council member.
Got it. We've got it recorded. But if you can, by our February capital budget update, if there's a project that is an absolute need to have in the upcoming budget, we want you to bring that and highlight it specifically so council can address that specific need and potentially budget around it to make sure it gets done.
Thank you. Will do.
Excellent. Thank you.
So what I heard was that at least Councilmember Petron wants to emphasize bridge projects, Sean. And if there are any bridge projects that are in dire need, try to find funding for that in this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, will do.
Here are some upcoming projects. Again, we talked about the 36th Avenue project and the James Garner project. The one looming project that has just recently been identified is the storm removal project. And again, this is an unbudgeted $7.7 million project. It is being conducted by city crews from the park maintenance division, the street maintenance division, the sanitation division, and by private contractors who are operating under our debris removal contract, and the project is ongoing. But from the finance director point of view, what I see is an unbudgeted $7.7 million project that we hope to get federal matching funds to reimburse 75% or 80% of those costs. But what if we don't? And that is what looms over our head. Because there would be no other way to come up with that amount of funds except from within the city's rainy day fund, the general fund, and the capital fund. And we would have to really strip down projects to come up with that amount of money.
Now, Mr. Francisco, even if we do get the presidential disaster declaration and we get 75% of that $7.7 million covered, how much is remaining, and is that budgeted for?
It's not budgeted for, but we could handle, we could handle about $800,000 without doing anything really dire. And usually, the state office of emergency management has reimbursed about 12% of declared disaster expenses. But my understanding is that the office of emergency management for Oklahoma does not have funds to do that this year, so we're not counting on that reimbursement. So we're thinking that our out-of-pocket costs are going to be about $1.7 million if we get the federal reimbursements. And that obviously is an unexpected significant expense to our general fund, capital fund, and potentially rainy day fund.
And we just had a windstorm before the ice storm, which also had an expense. How much was that, and where did that come from?
That was in a couple of hundred thousand range, and we really, you know, we absorbed that from within departmental budgets, really.
Okay. Just wanted to point out, there's lots of things that keep adding up in 2020.
But I have learned a lot over my career with these disasters, and Mr. O'Leary a lot more than me. But what we have learned about is in these ice storms, when you have so much tree damage, there's the first whammy of the trees that were broken down and frozen in the actual storm. But then there's always high-hanging branches, hangers, is the technical term. And then you get a big wind like we had night before last, and a lot of those hangers come down. That's why you had the big power outage in Oklahoma City on 23rd Street, it was a big hanger. So now we have a lot more tree damage that we really hadn't had over the last couple of weeks that has just now fallen. So all of those things are going to have to be cleaned up. And if we don't get the federal reimbursements, we're out of a lot of money.
Councilmember Hall.
So I know we've been talking about this over the last couple of weeks. So do we have any sense of timeline of when we expect to be, have more certainty about the federal relief?
I'll actually turn the mirror on that one, but I know that there's been a lot of work with our delegation to try to get those funds released.
City manager Paul.
It was actually a call today. I just texted the fire chief to get an update to see if they addressed the FEMA request. We are fortunate in that we are not alone in the swath of ice storm damage. So it was severe enough over a large enough territory to make our voice heard. We do recognize we are coming in on the tail end of hurricanes coming up our southern coastline and fires in the state of California. But that also means FEMA and the Department of Emergency Management is standing by, and they're on their toes. So it's been a little busy in DC, so we're not expecting a real quick turnaround on a decision. But we know that ask was made. We were requested a week ago Friday to have all of our cost estimates in at the state Department of Emergency Services where they gathered photographic evidence and quotes from cleanup contractors all over the state to submit. So I'm sure they're working on, if they have not already submitted the claim for the state of Oklahoma, they're getting close. So it's a thing we're good at, it's just a slow, painful process.
So another follow-up question. So Mr. Francisco mentioned that normally we would expect about a 12% reimbursement from the state and that that may not be as robust. So does that mean we're talking about a reduced percentage or zero percentage? Like, what should we be expecting there?
They haven't given us any indication as to what their limitations might be. I feel a little better recognizing that Tulsa was just a little too far north, and they got a lot of rain, but they didn't get any ice, and they didn't see the damage that we saw. So 12% of just the state number is probably a little more manageable. And timing-wise, if it doesn't come out of the current fiscal year, it may show up in next fiscal year's budget from the state of Oklahoma to make that reimbursement. So it could just be a matter of timing and Mr. Francisco's skills and ability to cash flow the emergency while we seek reimbursement.
And one more follow-up question, if you don't mind. There's an expense listed here, debris monitoring.
Yes.
At about $1.2 million.
Correct.
For those who are watching, could you just expand on why that's a necessary expense?
Absolutely. So in order to be eligible for FEMA cost recovery, the documentation effort is monumental. And it actually requires an individual to ride in each vehicle. Right now, there are between, I think there are 30 big pickup vehicles and 10 smaller vehicles out removing the hangers and the leaners. So there is a person from that management company in each one of those vehicles. And we did have that conversation to say, do we have 40 staff members that we can pull off their regular duty for 60 to 90 days and put them in the truck? And the answer was, we don't have them. So it is a cost that is also eligible for reimbursement. But a lot of documentation, and it's things we don't typically think about. When we send in pictures of what the debris field looked like, FEMA wants us to put the longitude and latitude on every single photo. And my guess is they've got some kind of Google Earth magic where they can zoom in and see the same picture that we're sending them to verify, yeah, that is the current state, that's not an old photo. So very detailed, but at least it's something we know how to address.
Thank you. So I'm assuming we're, I mean, we're making the assumption based on the continuing work that's being done over the next 90 days that this federal funding and hopefully some state funding will be coming our way.
Absolutely. And it's really, the only way to be eligible for reimbursement is to jump in with both feet. Had we sat on the sidelines, we wouldn't have cost estimates, we wouldn't have anything to share. And of course, we recognized how the damage has impacted everybody's ability just to make their way around, around town, sidewalks, streets, everything, so.
Well, I do want to give a shout out to city staff because you certainly jumped on it and tried to make things happen as quickly as possible. And even while you were trying to make some decisions about contractors, I know our city staff was at work because I... I saw myself in my neighborhood clearing streets and making streets and sidewalks passable for our residents in the meantime, so appreciate all that.
Really was a joint effort, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Judd Foster, Public Works with Mr. O'Leary, Chris Mattingly in the utility division, every division that had trucks and people with big tools all took to the streets, and we were fielding calls just to make sure traffic was open first, and then, you know, it's kind of dealt back a little bit as our contractors began to arrive, but the skills of that group of staff members and Mr. Francisco's ability to track those costs to keep us eligible, we're in very good hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I might say is just a plug, as our residents are getting their debris out to the curb, I would remind them, please, to make sure that you're not putting tree limbs and branches on top of your water meter or your gas meter. When the big heavy equipment comes out with the big grappling hook and picks up those branches, it doesn't know if there's a gas meter there, and it'll just pick the whole thing up. So please make sure to take some care about where you're putting those, that debris. The public safety sales tax fund is a capital fund from the standpoint that one of the things that was included in the public safety sales tax two ordinance in 2015 was critical capital needs. We have progressed with a lot of those critical capital needs already. We're nearing completion of the emergency communication system, which is a $15 million project. We have completed design for the emergency communications and operations center, but as you know, there is a shortfall in funding for that project. It is a public safety sales tax project, and the question is, should we build it for the available funds that we have within the public safety sales tax revenue bonds? Or should we seek additional revenue for that capital project? Once that one is done, the last of the critical capital needs projects is the reconstruction of Fire Station Five, but again, the issue before council is about that ELC facility. Fire apparatus replacement is a major function of the public safety sales tax. This shows you what has been done with those apparatus replacement funds in the last few fiscal years and what is ongoing or planned for this fiscal year. Norman Forward Sales Tax is a capital fund. This shows you some projects that have recently been completed out of the Norman Forward Sales Tax Fund. Y'all didn't see me at the Blake Baldwin.
I did.
I did.
You didn't? I was not on a, I was just minding the granddaughter scooter, but it was a wonderful event, and again, an example of what Norman Ford is doing to transform our community. And again, here's a picture of that Blake Baldwin Skate Park, it is lighted. As a frustrated musician, I'm going to put in a plug to Mr. Foster that that music needs to be permanent. I understand that that was just a DJ that was there for the grand opening, but it really added a lot, and I think it'd be nice to have that all the time. Here are some ongoing Norman Forward projects. We've talked a lot about the indoor multi-sport and aquatic facility and the things that Mr. Foster and the project managers have done to keep those projects moving forward in some ways, despite the defeat of the general obligation bond proposal back in August. But again, these projects are ongoing. Here are some continuing and future projects from Norman Forward Funds. The Saxon Park Development has not started yet, a lot of the trail projects and the Canadian River Park project have not started yet. Those are pay-as-you-go projects that are planned out for future years as cash flows become available, but they are included in the Norman Forward program. The room tax fund, as it relates to the parks portion, is a capital fund. Here are some projects that are anticipated in this fiscal year. Some of them have been delayed because of revenue shortfalls from the room tax, but again, these are planned projects to be paid for from the room tax. All of those things taken together, some things for council to consider as we move forward, the ongoing I-35 corridor study and what may happen related to a Rock Creek interchange, what will happen related to the Indian Hills interchange. Public transit projects, you know about the transit facility, but the RTA, the Regional Transit Authority, that has been approved and that studies are ongoing for a regional transit system between Norman Midwest City and Edmond is ongoing and how that might be financed in the future. The bus transfer station over on Porter, I think is coming to council for the purchase and sale agreement in your next meeting or two. Stormwater infrastructure, again, is a need without a fund, basically, but it is an ongoing need. Down there toward the bottom right is what we were talking about earlier, about those reserves the council had set up for the senior center and for the Robinson and Crossroads I-35 West Frontage Road project. Now that funds have been made available for both of those projects, we would like council direction if it's okay for us to release those reserves, and just some head nods or hell knows would be fine.
Before we dive into this item, I would like to make sure we're giving clear direction on freeing those reserves. Councilmember Holman?
Definitely agree with that, freeing up those funds. Also wanted to go back to the ELC question. I, based on the information we've been given about that facility over the last couple of years, I think, to me, that facility can't be like half-assed, I guess I should say. It really needs to be built to withstand the severe storm and things like that, and that was my biggest concern about shortchanging that project or cutting parts out of it like that, that we might not be able to go back later and do it again or add on, that we really need, that that building needed to be done right the first time. It's based on my most recent understanding of it, if things have changed design-wise, that we can, you know, get the dispatch in there and make that secure, but I feel pretty strongly that building, unless staff recommends otherwise, that it needs to be done the right way, and we can't afford to cut corners on it due to budget.
So again, that is a question for council. You'll see in your package, you had a recommendation from the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee that you proposed to the voters a general obligation bond, a single proposition just for the emergency operations center, it'd be about $8 million. And I know that council has talked about the need to increase the public safety sales tax rate to pay for the ongoing expenses for the positions that the public safety sales tax has added, but that the general fund is having to subsidize right now. So that's two different questions, but they are questions that council needs to consider. One is, do you want to come up with one-time capital money as recommended by the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee from a general obligation bond to close the gap in the cost of building the ELC building right? And/or do you want to propose a sales tax rate increase to the public safety sales tax to pay for those ongoing personnel expenses?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
Oh. It was a long time.
All right, Councilmember Petron, or Carter, sorry.
Anthony, what's the total of those two, the senior center and the Robinson I-35?
It's right at $1 million. It's about $230,000 for the senior center and about $790,000 for Robinson Crossroads.
My opinion is clear direction to find the appropriate use of those funds. And can we go back to the slide? Second to the last slide?
Can you tell me the funds you were looking at?
Keep that one, challenges, okay. So now I know that we historically have pools of money that's historically paid for certain types of things, and so like the $5 million or $25 million, $28 million, what is going to be the spring that's expiring is typically a neighborhood roads project. It's not stormwater, it's not the major transportation. So the transportation bond we passed, was that last year?
We passed a transportation bond in 2019. That was for reconstruction.
That is typically, what pool of projects does it typically fund?
That, and again, when you pass a general obligation bond program, you have to tell the voters exactly the programs that you're going to pay for.
Yeah.
So that 2019 bond was for the Jenkins Project, the Porter Streetscape and Porter intersection with Acres, so again, very distinct.
Do you have a term in the staff to describe those type of projects or those major transportation projects versus neighborhood transportation projects? I'm just looking for some nomenclature here that...
Yeah, the nomenclature is really resurfacing versus reconstruction.
Say that again?
Resurfacing, which is the five-year neighborhood program.
That's a neighborhood, you look at that as a resurfacing.
Because you're taking a street and you're just fixing it, okay?
Yeah.
You're repaving it.
Yeah.
As opposed to a program that you're widening a street or reconstructing a street in a whole new way.
And is that where like bridges would typically?
Bridges typically, again, it depends, if you tell the voters, you could do either sort of project out of either one of those bonds.
Well, I'm worried about changing the purpose of the neighborhood resurfacing program since it's been so popular like Councilmember Holman described.
Yeah.
You know, so stormwater is definitely its own pool of projects that we've asked the voters twice to fund with bonds, and they've declined to do that. So to do, I mean, Councilmember Petron has noted it's large deficit in bridges, it looks to me like it's such an overwhelming number of huge projects that that needs to be its own. Like you're saying, a bond issue for the emergency operations center for $8 million, a bond issue to address bridges, just like we had a bond issue back years ago to address sidewalks. It was, it failed, but we tried to do that, you know, this pool of money to attack a certain deficit problem. That's really what it needs, I mean, would you not guess?
I certainly agree with you.
I mean, it needs a large infusion of money, just like stormwater needs a large infusion of money.
What I have to speak to is what the Bond Proceeds Act says that you can and cannot do with certain types of general obligation bonds, and what things you can combine on one ballot proposition.
Yeah.
But there is no limit to the number of propositions that you could have for different pooled areas of projects, and let the voters vote them up or down for those individual areas. So again, that's totally up to council's discretion.
And a question for Mr. O'Leary, if council were to say they wanted to bundle bridge projects, what is the minimum dollar amount that you think would be useful? Not that we could conquer all of our bridge issues in, you know, one project, and there's a lot of engineering that goes in and a lot of construction, but is this a $10 million conversation to make it viable, or is it a $15 million conversation, or is it a $5 million conversation? Sean, I don't know if you guys have pondered, I know you know the status of our bridges, but I don't know if we've drilled down into them to try to get a ballpark idea about what it would cost to solve some of those bridge issues in a nice package.
Let me offer this, again, there's about 10 to 12 bridges that really should be replaced, let's say in the next five to 10 years ideally. The average cost of replacement is going to be about $2 to $3 million each, so if we're dealing with 10, then we're dealing with $30 million, if we're dealing with 15, then, you know, that could be as high as $45 million. There are, of course, among those 10 or 12, three or four that are more serious than the others, and that could be about a $10 million program if you just tackle the worst first.
That does help, thank you, Sean.
Another follow-up question would be regarding the fleet, and I'm hearing you know that we should be, I've heard this since my orientation, that we should be spending this $4 to $5 million a year to keep our fleet, and now we have a public transportation, where if I remember correctly, a new bus is $500,000, so one bus would eat up a quarter of our transportation fleet budget?
Absolutely.
So is there a remedy out there, a creative remedy in the, to catch us up, you know, to some, something that makes sense, or I would look for direction.
There are two components that we need to keep in mind.
I know you're talking about the fleet, which is a great, I mean, the leasing program, but barring no lease, I mean, what?
Mr. O'Leary and his crew are working on an application for our very first all-electric public transit bus, and I think the sticker price on an all-electric bus is about $1 million, but there are grant dollars out there to help us close that gap. The RTA conversation, as that develops, and they're telling us in the next three years, we're really going to start to see what the silhouette of this looks like, it will be determined whether or not it will include the operation and, you know, the sustenance for our fleet as well, so.
A little light at the tunnel there, maybe?
Exactly, so we can push to make sure that that question is adequate to cover all of our fleet needs, and as it becomes its own separate living entity for public transit, there may be a transfer of assets from cities providing that service to the authority on which we have a council member or two sitting on the board.
One last question that was brought up by a constituent was in relation to the RTA, and the train station will be at the depot, where our current train station is. There is some concern with this citizen about the location of the bus transfer in relation to the train. So if someone's taking the train and then they've got to walk to the bus transfer station in the midst of winter or the hot of summer, that that distance was a concern to the RTA, is that something, or there was some, or where, does that make sense?
It absolutely does, and I think we're probably, I am, I've heard there could be as many as four station stops for commuter rail inside Norman city limits, and some conversations have taken place about where those are strategically located. We talk about the depot site, whether or not that site is actually adequately wide enough to put in a platform large enough for the volume of traffic we hope to see take advantage of the service, yet to be determined. We think we're in the neighborhood, which is pretty lucky, I think, to start the conversation, and in terms of what is expected, in terms of an experience for participating in that flavor of public transit, I think if we were to look around the country, you know, anywhere within, you know, quarter mile is considered that walkable solution to other components of master.
I would just ask you to consider that and your thought and planning process and in your discussions with the RTA.
Absolutely.
About this whole, how we're going to blend our public transportation bus system of Norman, including the disabled, with the train.
Because we know the farther south down the tracks we get, we get a little more width in a couple of spots that could provide.
Yeah.
Just what we're looking for, make that close connection.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Bierman, and then Councilmember Holman?
So I do agree that we should be releasing the reserve funds. I kind of want to circle back to the EOC a little bit, because I maybe am a little more bearish than others on the thought of continuing to pack a 2021 calendar full of bond votes, full of asking people to open their wallets and give even more money. So that's concerning to me. I think it's fantastic that this, we are looking at a street maintenance bond before it expires so that it is cost neutral to residents, but that's probably going to be one of the few that we look at passing next year that are going to be cost neutral to residents. So I was wondering about the EOC specifically, I know there were, seems like there were some aspects of it versus others that might be more cost-effective to do now versus later, such as I'd much rather see an expansion of rooms versus... such as, I'd much rather see an expansion of rooms versus bulletproof glass. You know, bulletproof glass can be retrofitted in, only losing the cost of the original glass that you put in there. Bringing out complete new construction crews to add on to a building costs a heck of a lot more later on. So, my hope is that before February, we can maybe use that perspective on the EOC and any other projects. I'm really glad to hear that the fleet maintenance facility was not included as one that is having cost problems. Um, but I would like us to look at kind of all of our projects that way. Are there things that we can do now and other things later, maybe when we do have more wiggle room in terms of funding, um, to be able to bridge some of this, bridge, without having to go to voters all the time? Because I am not all that optimistic about what voters are going to be willing or able to pay above and beyond what they're already paying. So, I really would hate to put them in that position without saying, we have done truly everything we possibly can to squeeze out the most value of our dollars now.
Uh, Councilmember Beerman, you, this is, uh, this is why I became an accountant, it's because the math is really simple. Um, we typically have a very long list of capital projects, uh, that add up to that annual budget, or we recognize we'll spread it over a couple of years' worth of, of revenue into the CIP budget. It is entirely up to council to say, you know, we've done, you know, thirty-five projects a year, every year, for years and years. Maybe this year we do eight, and they just happen to be bigger ones. So that, that is, uh, an absolute reality that council can choose to prioritize and say, you guys check off those big boxes, and we can push those smaller projects back one year and catch up to those in 2022, absolutely your prerogative. So, we'll be prepared with some, um, value-added engineering, um, steps that could be taken in the EOC for our February conversation to say, here's the, the, the minimum square footage we really need to make it a viable facility, and then these other additions, you know, you can always, um, you know, add to the parking lot and add a, you know, a, a, a more fun break room at some point in the future. But the minimum is, how do you get those dispatchers out of the basement into a, a truly hardened facility? So, that'll be step one, the minimum. We'll bring that to you in February, I appreciate that input.
Agreed, I appreciate that. And then as we continue to talk about things, it seems like a lot of what we would like to do and things we never have enough money to do are sidewalks. And as Councilmember Carter pointed out, we did try a bond program that failed. And I think that that failed not in large part to the fact that the threshold is a lot higher, because while we require sidewalks to be installed, we then take no responsibility for the maintenance. We have a fifty-fifty cost share program that up to a certain amount of money, it looks like fifty thousand, thereabouts, we're willing to pay half of. But I do wonder if a bond, if a bond in future years, I'm talking a couple of years out, might be more effective if we actually change the way we classify sidewalks, and actually take over responsibility for them, and do it on a more proactive basis. Um, Sean is, I can't see Sean, so I don't know what the look on his face is right now. But one of the reasons why the maintenance tends to cost so much more is because they are allowed to get into such terrible condition before residents get sick and tired enough of it that they start wondering who's responsible for this and how do we take care of it. So, we might be able to make our dollars stretch further if we do more proactive maintenance by having them be ours in the first place.
The concept of that street maintenance program in residential neighborhoods, if the parameters are just bumped out to the back edge of the sidewalk on both sides instead of just asphalt rejuvenation, um, will make sure there are no, no concerns about making that happen? I don't think so.
I'm sure there's something that I'm not thinking of, but, I think, and that also reduces the threshold. If we ever want to do a future bond when it comes to sidewalks, we no longer have to hit that magical sixty percent threshold, fifty percent plus one will do just fine. So, not for, I would think, starting the conversation now about how we can address this more cost-effectively in future years will be helpful in helping us create a more walkable community, once it's no longer the responsibility of the residents to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and one thing I would point out is that sidewalks are not a public utility, so they do require a sixty percent vote for general obligation bonds.
Right, for now. My hope is that in the future it won't.
I'm not sure if it is statutory that the adjoining property owner is responsible for the right of way adjoining their property, or if that's by city policy, but-
Okay, question, Councilmember Holman?
Okay, so the bridge stuff, well, first, the, I'm a little hesitant to mess with the formula on the road maintenance bond program because it's so popular and it's worked very well and voters like it. So I'm a little hesitant to add anything to it or change it in any way based on that. Um, but I would note that the road, I don't know if you wanna call it the road enhancement or expansion bond package that we do every seven years or so, the last one being April 2019, uh, the one before that, 2012, and then twenty-six, two thousand and six before that. Um, in two thousand and six, that bond replaced East Lindsey Street from Jenkins to the railroad tracks, and it replaced the bridge that goes over Bishop Creek right there. And then it built the, it built most of the railroad overpass at Robinson, that bridge. And then in 2012, that bond included two specific bridge projects only. Uh, the Franklin Road, uh, Bridge over Little River, and then the Brookhaven, uh, Bridge in Ward Three on Main Street. Those were two bridge-only projects that were included. And then that bond also redid West Lindsey Street, which included the Imhoff Road, uh, or Imhoff Creek Bridge too. So, that bond did three, the one before it did two, I think. And so that one typically does get used to reconstruct bridges, either on their own, like in Franklin, or the Main Street Brookhaven Creek one, or in, uh, paired with a road widening project like West Lindsey Street, for example. So, I would definitely support not necessarily having to wait until we do another big road bond, uh, probably ten years from now, but, um, maybe not in 2021, but 2022, I think the council needs to look at a bridge maintenance bond. And if it's, I mean, I was thinking a hundred million dollars, if it's closer to thirty to fifty to address the really in dire need, you know, we need to replace in the next five to ten-year ones, I, I would think that, you know, that, that could be something voters could get behind. Identify these projects, bridges only, these are the critical, mission-critical ones. And so maybe not in 2021, but I would definitely encourage this council, future councils, to look in 2022, 2023 perhaps, at a bridge maintenance bond. And I definitely wanna explore any ways, any way possible that we could do more sidewalk stuff. Whether it could be, again, I'm a little hesitant to include it in the road maintenance bond for the neighborhoods. It would be appropriate to me that if we're going in and, like we're doing in the neighborhood over here by, by Norman High, replacing all the curb and gutters, if we were replacing the sidewalks that exist, or if we were able to use it to add them where they don't exist. Um, but I, again, I would, I wouldn't wanna risk the road maintenance approval by adding that, if that would put it, put it in jeopardy, so. But I, I, we do need to find a way to help people, cause I agree, most people don't know that their, the sidewalk in front of their house is their responsibility, until it starts to fall apart, and then they call their co- council member one day, and the councilor says, well, we have a fifty-fifty. So, anyway, that's, uh, I think my thoughts on that, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Patron?
Okay, I, does this work?
Gotta get really close to it.
Okay. Um, I also wanna go over the numbers on the EOC really quickly too. So, the amount of the shortfall is how much?
About eight million dollars.
Okay, so, how much cash on hand do we have to do that project currently?
Um, about six and a half million dollars, some of which has been spent on design.
Okay. Um, but some of the eight million dollars would be spent, I mean, that's going towards the, the full project.
No, the eight million dollars is, is based on-
I'm sorry.
The amount that was placed on the general obligation bond issue in August as the gap between where we have designed the project and scaled it down to fit within the funds available, and the difference between that and what is needed to build the project at the desired scope.
So the budget for it, for design scope is fourteen?
Yes, to, to build it right is about fourteen million, yes.
Okay, so the, um, oversight, the P S S T Oversight Committee asked for three million seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, CARES Act money, they asked for the remaining funds. And so, you know, if I'm understanding correctly, based on basic math, that, that if we were to allocate that three million in CARES Act dollars, that doesn't mean we're breaking ground because there's still a significant delta, correct?
There is still a significant delta. The question is, do you want to break down, break ground on the scaled-down facility? That, that has the built-in problems that Councilmember Holman was talking about, it would not be a hardened facility. Again, the design task over the last year to year and a half has been to scale the project down to a level that the, the available funds can pay for what would be value-engineered, okay? But the decision of at least the P S S T Oversight Committee and to council, when they placed it on the GO bond ballot in August, was that that scaled-down project was not acceptable, that you wanted to come up with a means to build it right. And that's an eight million dollar additional price tag.
Okay, and probably the Chief King might be the more appropriate person for me to ask, but, um, it sounds to me then the eight million dollar delta, that would be kind of the Taj Mahal of EOCs. Which is something to be proud of, by the way.
Something to be proud of, I, you know, again, I- I think the project manager is Captain Barber, I know the Chief Foster is probably on the Zoom call. Uh, but, but again, I don't know if you call it the Taj Mahal, but it is adequate space for the number of dispatchers that we have determined that we need. It is a hardened facility that would withstand an F-four tornado, and does not have to be abandoned in the case of that sort of a storm.
Okay, so I guess my question that by February, but of course I kinda need to know be- before the next discussion on CARES Act money, would be, um, if we were to entertain that, is it something that, um, the facility that we would build with this six and a half plus the other three, so, and maybe council can come up with a little bit more, so maybe a ten million dollar facility, is that something that's going to be, to meet most of those checkboxes that is a facility that we can be proud of in this community and that, that is going to have a long life that does these?
That's certainly a question we can pose to the, to the design engineers.
Okay, well, um-
What could you build for ten million versus six point five?
Yeah, okay, well, maybe if, um, by the next portion of this meeting tonight, if, so that we can take their ask, you know, really understand what it is that they're asking, um, because to me it sounds like they want to break ground. So if that's the case, what that would actually buy, so that we understand the CARES Act money and, and the requests that they're making, so that's the first part. And then, same thing for the public who might be listening tonight on the senior center, and we're talking about releasing those funds. Can you, can you tell the public, again, just exactly how much money we have in reserve, and whether or not the cash on hand, combined with the, um, CARES Act money, we're not dipping into the twelve million dollar facility budget, correct? Can you just go on the record, just so we don't have any panicked people?
Yes, that's correct. Um, the council has allocated seven point six million dollars of Norman Forward Funds toward the senior center project, and the council has appropriated four point eight million dollars of CARES Act Funds to the senior center project, to bring it to the total twelve point four million dollars of engineering estimated cost to build the full facility in one phase.
Okay, and that's cash on hand, so that when council, or should council decide to release those funds to take care of the deficit, senior center is a box checked, it's fine.
That's correct.
Okay, and then the same thing for my constituents, if you can, in Ward Eight, I'll do it on behalf of, uh, Councilmember Peacock, for the Robinson Crossing, can you do this, the same?
Yes, um, the funds have been identified and paid to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation to match the federal funds, which have been allocated, um, for the Robinson Crossroads Project, and it is to be bid within the next few weeks, uh, to begin construction on that project. So yes, the city has allocated all the funds, and are at least identified at this point, to be needed.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco, and I'm supportive of releasing those funds.
Councilmember Carter? No, wait. Foreman?
I am.
Okay.
This is my maiden voyage in here, so I'm sorry. Uh, this is just to the city manager, um, I have a lot of notes over a lot of different pages. Can you just send us like a concise list of every potential thing that we could send to the voters next year? Every bond, sales tax increase, dollar amount percentages, what we think we're gonna do, that would be super helpful.
We absolutely can do that, we'll assemble it at our staff meeting tomorrow, get it out to you tomorrow afternoon.
Oh, you're the best, thank you so much.
Councilmember Hall?
So I think we've covered a lot of territory, but I just wanted to, um, add my support for releasing the approximately one million dollar, one million dollars in funds, is that the right number, about?
Yes.
Um, definitely in support of that, to address the shortfall. Um, also, on the EOC, I would love to, um, you know, get additional information as we go forward, because this is a project that I also have been in support of from the beginning, to be built the right way to, um, stand, um, withstand what we need for the future. I think Councilmember Beerman's point is well-taken. I would love to make sure we're starting construction in a positive place to, um, fully build out the facility as the designers and, um, you know, we expect to do. And, you know, how we accomplish that, I'm not really sure, but I am in support of funding that facility, because I think, um, trying to build it within the budget when we already know it's not what we need is foolhardy. So, I hope we can find a path forward there, so I'm in support of pursuing that. Um, sidewalk, um, projects, um, it was interesting to look at that sidewalk list, and you basically said that, um, we spent to the max in, in some categories, but maybe not to the max in others. So, I would be interested in, you know, understanding why we're not doing that, because the need in Core Norman and Ward Seven and Ward Two and Ward Four is, um, huge as far as infrastructure goes. And so, um, I also support, um, all of the current sidewalk programs that we have. And if there are programs that are not working effectively, so that we're not using the funds, I'd like to understand that a little better and maybe reapportion how those are going. Also, um, definitely in support of the sidewalks to schools program, that's a particularly, um, needed program in Core Norman. Um, the horizontal cutting program has been, I think, a, um, wonderful, uh, creative solution to the problems that we have with our crumbling sidewalks and infrastructure in that area in Core Norman. So, definitely continue the support of that program. Um, I also, uh, for me personally, the street maintenance bond program is one of my highest priorities to get on the ballot in 2021, because of all of the, um, reasons that we've mentioned. I think that's an extremely popular program, as pointed out by Councilmember Holman, that get, gains support every time it's taken to the voters. And I think this is one of the basic functions that residents of a city expect a city to do. So I, um, in, in full support of getting that on the ballot as soon as is practical, and to make sure that we take advantage of the fact that we would present it to our residents at a time where everyone is worried about increases in anything, that we maintain, um, the level of funding that we have. And as you say, may really be able to do more, um, with what we have if we go ahead and get it passed now. So definitely in support of that. Um, I'm intrigued about the bridges, um, and like the idea of looking at the long-term possibilities of what we might be doing that feed into the same kind of bond programs that we have for two different categories of infrastructure. Um, and maybe sidewalks fits into that too, I'm not so sure that's gonna be popular this year, but, um, I think that's definitely worth a long-term conversation. Um, let's see. I think we've pretty much gone over everything else. I think that's all I have, thank you.
So the last real point of discussion for the council is about that three million dollars of CARES Act Funds. Again, um, originally, we, we were obtaining nine point six million dollars.
Mr. Francisco, we've had a request for a quick- Mr. Francisco, we've had a request for a quick break.
Okay.
So let's give it five minutes. All right, now for our final evening agenda item, the discussion regarding use of coronavirus aid relief and economic security, or CARES Act funds and what we do with the remaining funds. Mr. Francisco, do you want to? Okay. Our city clerk handed out a resolution of the council of the city of Norman adopting the Small Business Relief Package Guidelines, setting for certain eligibility and ranking criteria and for funding programs for which general obligation bonds issued for economic and community development funds or federal funding provided for similar purposes may be allocated. As we've seen, we have a laundry list of financial needs in this community and it is our charge to determine where the remainder of those $3 million-plus funds goes. I know that we've all expressed interest, if not in meetings or on social media, about supporting our small businesses during this time. We've received plenty of emails on that and city staff figured this is a good place to start since it was something we had envisioned putting into place with a $5 million bond back in August that unfortunately was not successful. Okay. Yeah, council did adopt this, yes. So this is what we had planned to do. That it's a lesser amount. Things are a little bit different, I suppose. There are other community models to follow that we could look at if we wanted to take a deeper dive into this. But, City Manager Pyle, my first question is, when do we have to decide?
There is no timetable on the $3,75,000 that will be in city coffers that will sit as unappropriated fund balance until council acts upon it. The December deadline that we may have heard about in different news outlets had to do with the deadline by which cities needed to submit all of their cost for reimbursements to the state. So we have achieved compliance with that deadline. And those dollars, if they are not yet in Mr. Francisco's coffers, they will be, we anticipate, before months end. On a note from our previous conversation, I did get confirmation that the state of Oklahoma's request to FEMA is now in FEMA's queue. So Ball is completely in the federal court and we'll be watching closely. So you'll hear us scream and jump for joy as soon as we hear the positive outcome we anticipate. The conversation related to the small business recovery component, a lot of the criteria that council had put into this process, staff feels is still incredibly valid. There are a couple of nuances where council has solved some of these issues in its original appropriation, satisfying the shortfall in Visit Norman and the Norman Arts Council. That's why a couple of the upper limits in some of these loan and/or grant programs were as high as they were. They were kind of set that high because we knew what the needs were of some of our local nonprofits. With those needs met, it may be very appropriate for council to consider smaller amounts. What we have seen from some of our neighboring agencies in the metro, some of them have made it very simple. They were grants up to $25,000. You could use your criteria to qualify them. Up to $25,000, it's a grant. The check goes out the door. There is no repayment. It's probably a better benefit to the business in the local economy if they don't have to worry about a repayment program. Some of them have come up with grants of $5,000 per business application. And there is no wrong answer in that discussion. But you did a lot of heavy lifting in this framework and I think most of it's probably still very applicable if council chooses to go down that road with CARES Act funding.
Thank you for that background, City Manager Pyle. I will throw out that if we, what I would like to focus on more is the micro grants. You know, I heard from a landlord today that he's given massive discounts on rent to the businesses within his building, but now he has to pay the county. So I'm also curious, have we looked into opportunities to collaborate with the county? How much, how much CARES funding did they get and what are they doing with it?
We actually had that conversation yesterday morning, recognizing that Cleveland County didn't fare near as well as Oklahoma County. I don't have any of those exact dollars. I don't know if Mr. Francisco's heard or seen anything in terms of what, what the county came away with in terms of their allocation. I think we probably have the lion's share of the population in one spot and the rest of it spread out. I also am unfamiliar with what the county was able to assemble and submit for reimbursements as well. But definitely something we can come up with in a conversation, a phone call tomorrow.
I think that'd be helpful if you could find information on it just because I do think this is an area where, especially in the state of Oklahoma, where they get the bulk of property tax, we both need to be working together on relieving our businesses because the property tax bill doesn't come to us.
Correct.
Yet we're looking at helping out our businesses as well. So I welcome the opportunity to collaborate with our county commissioners on saving small business and supporting them through this difficult time in our community. So I'll kick it off with that. I really support beefing up the micro grants. I, I think people just need something to get by right now. I think in terms of the administrative work it will take to do a payment plan, that's, that's definitely my support. So I look forward to hearing all of your comments. We've got a lot in the queue. And we'll start with Councilmember Holman and then Councilmember Foreman.
Thank you. So yes, my biggest concern, or what I want to help out with is, is our small locally-owned businesses. I'm thinking like across the street, Sergio's, not only hit by COVID, but then being without power, having to replace his entire refrigerator full of food. You know, several thousands of dollars in many cases. You know, more corporate chain restaurants are definitely in a better position to recover from that type of situation. And we've, you know, this city, this community has spent, you know, nearly 20 years at least investing in places like downtown and revitalization and building up this atmosphere that attracts these local businesses. And, and now we're at risk of losing them. And so being able to help out with rent, that's the most messages I've received from people is we need help with rent. We need help with utilities. We're trying to stay on, you know, but that, that seems to be the biggest burden. And so I'd want to make sure we're addressing that. And then also that there's enough, that there is the ability if we approve this program and it gets off the ground and, you know, a couple of weeks, we notice that there's some, some issue with it that we could adjust. We'd have the ability to adjust the criteria or whatever it might be if we find out that some of our small businesses are running into some sort of hurdle that we didn't think of in the criteria, that we'd be able to come back and make an adjustment to address that.
Definitely our strong suit is our ability to react quickly and just keep our ear, you know, on the rail. And something to consider at the micro grant amount of $10,000, you know, 300-plus businesses in Norman could receive assistance. And when you start, you know, driving around town counting 300, that's a pretty substantial impact on the local economy, no doubt about it.
That would be my definite, my, my strong preference about how we use it is targeting that specific purpose as best we can.
And I also want to remind council, I would like to say we have the full $3.75 million to work with, but I do think that the ice storm, even if we get the federal funding and some state funding, there's still going to be a delta that we're going to have to make up. That is not budgeted for. And so I don't know if we, what are our options if we don't use CARES funding to make that up?
I'll let Mr. Francisco share with you where he thinks those dollars come from when we get to June 30, 2021.
So some of the $7 million expenditure is our crews doing work. And their assignment today, instead of patching potholes, is picking up limbs. That is a reimbursable cost, but it is a cost that's kind of not additional cost out of pocket. But there is a substantial additional cost out of pocket when we're paying the contractors. So what do we have to come up with? And where do we come up with it? Is first, the allocated departmental budgets. That's the first thing. The second thing is the 1% emergency reserve account. And the third thing is unexpended allocations from other departments and other areas within the budget. The fourth thing is the rainy day fund. But remember, we can only tap into the rainy day fund if there is a declared disaster. Now, again, we're all making the assumption that that's going to happen. And if that happens, then there's about a $2.5 million rainy day fund that we could tap into. With the caveat, remember that we have to recover it within, within three years. We have to replace it, at least to its minimum level. So those are the, those are the major areas. Obviously, if you put in a million or whatever dollars of this money, it would lessen the amount that we have to come up with from the general fund or the rainy day fund.
What's your recommendation?
I recommend that council does what council decides to do.
I need like a financial planning. You know, keep in mind, we could do only 500 grand to lighten the load to make it up later. We don't have to do the full amount. I mean, is, what are you, what are you thinking here? I mean, is, what are you thinking here?
At least until we know that we're going to get the federal declaration, I would hold off on appropriating CARES Act money for this purpose. At the point that we know that we're going to get those reimbursements, then yes, I would recommend that some of the up-fronted money come from this CARES Act funding. And then when we get the reimbursements, council could reappropriate the reimbursed money for whatever purposes you may come up with tonight or in the future. So that would be kind of my strategy.
We are almost forced to wait and see then, aren't we, in how we spend this? But again, we don't have a December 31 deadline. I'd rather us take our time and make the most effective choices for our community. Councilmember Holman, do you have another one before we?
Just to be clear, waiting until then to decide to use it on storm debris pickup? Or waiting to do?
Waiting to see how much we get from the federal and state government to address the storm debris pickup.
Okay, so we wouldn't be waiting till the end of December to figure out rent and utilities?
No.
Correct. We, it is...
We can do that now.
Okay. Possible, even likely, here in the next two to three weeks, we could receive that federal declaration, and then it'd be a green light. Once that declaration is made, reimbursement is only a matter of time at that point. So right now, it's a question mark. If that question is answered, you'll be in much more comfortable shape with this appropriation.
And would you recommend, like, allocating 2 million for this and leaving a million point three?
That would be a great place to start.
Left aside in case we need it for the storm pickup, and then if we don't, then we...
And still allow you to advance small business recovery. You know, like you said, power outages, there were a lot of issues that COVID was bad enough on its own. And then you take a power outage for up to seven or eight days for some of our residents and businesses and add that on top. And it'll take us, you know, a little bit of time to put together our application packages, advertise it, collect them, and start reviewing it. And I have a feeling long before we reviewed all those applications, we'll have an answer from the federal government.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Foreman?
For me, my priority would be to see the money first, go back to the city of Norman. So for me, aiding in the storm debris is priority. I also wouldn't mind having a little bit of a reserve because just that the rate 2020 is gone, 2021 is probably not looking so hot either. And we might see this happen again, and then what would we do? So I wouldn't mind seeing, allocate a little bit to that, and then saving a little extra, because I know that we only budget so much for that. How much is it for that per fiscal year that we budget?
About 900,000, Mr. Francisco? Yeah, just in, and council appropriates that emergency response bucket of money. So it is available to us on July 1, fortunately, because it was about that second week in July when the windstorm happened, and we already had an appropriation from council to start that initial cleanup. So about 900,000.
So that would be something that's important to me. Any capital projects that are small that we could do is to try to help close that gap of what we would end negative in the capital projects. I would be interested in seeing what list of smaller things that we could do with that money. And then as far as aiding the small business, I think the smaller business is the better because they're the ones that are going to be harder to recover. And so for me, a priority would be not doing any loans, but just giving it as grants because it's going to be much harder for them to pay us back. And I believe that because I think we're going to have another storm issue. So that's where I'm at in life, in case you're wondering. And I think we have on here priority considerations. One thing that I would like to make a top priority would be any business owner or organization that maybe helps serve the public, something like that. Something where we're kind of, you know, pay it forward sort of thing and try to get the most bang for our buck in that. So that would be something that I would want to prioritize, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bierman?
So I have a couple thoughts on this. I really feel like we do need to assist residents, whether they are business owners or simply employees, because there is not great optimism right now for any kind of additional stimulus before that magical January date. So I really want to ensure, I really like what we've come up with, but I do agree with Mayor Clark that I think we need to be focusing more on the micro grants than the larger grants. I still think we need to ensure that those who did not receive EIDL or PPP get priority, including businesses that are owned by members of our marginalized communities. But I do also want to make sure that sole proprietors get access to this as well. That's one thing, I actually reached out to several people I know who are sole proprietors of their businesses. Not a single one was able to receive EIDL or PPP because they don't have the same kind of working relationships with their financial institutions that business owners with larger assets have. So by the time they were able to figure out the system, they all had closed. The advance was closed, then the PPP was closed, and then it reopened and closed even quicker than the first one. So I really want to ensure that those who own their businesses as sole proprietors get access to this money. A lot of them are therapists, counselors, you know, people who see patients and aren't necessarily receiving the billing that they're due, and they have an obligation to continue to see their clients. So I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of those types of business owners. But I also think we need to support individual workers as well. There are a lot of workers, especially those who work under a tipped wage, who got next to nothing from unemployment because of how their payment is, their pay is structured. And a lot of those are unable to access PUA, the pandemic unemployment assistance for those types of employees or gig workers. The system is a mess. I know people whose cases are still being backlogged. They've received nothing. There's no guarantee that they will receive anything. And if you are a waiter or a bartender, now's not a great time for you either because statewide, we now have some additional restrictions going into effect for bars and restaurants. And so that kind of leads me into Councilmember Nash's excellent ideas that were sent to us very late this afternoon, so I'm not sure if everyone got a chance to see them. I think there is a lot of inspiration that we can draw from the Citizen Potawatomi Nation and how they have structured their assistance program. You want to talk about really getting people money when they need it. You can receive a student assistance grant for up to $300 to buy your child new school clothes or necessary school needs. Even if you're teaching at home, you still have needs for your child in order to ensure that they don't fall behind. I know administratively, some of that stuff could be a little more labor-intensive than others. And for these smaller grants, I think using the city's kind of low-income assistance method would be a great way to ensure that those who have the most need are the ones who access these grants first. But can I also get a status update of the CDBG Rent Utilities Assistance Fund?
We had rental assistance and utility assistance. My last conversation with Lisa Craig was that it was still not fully subscribed, about halfway through it.
Which tells me that there are still a lot of people who don't know about it. Because one of the issues we have brewing, not just here, excuse me, but throughout the country, is that the CDC's eviction halt ends on December 31. And from what I understand, they are not planning to extend it. The hope was that that was a bridge to give Congress time to pass stimulus, and it didn't happen. So I do not believe that the CDC is going to be motivated to take that kind of extraordinary step into next year. And so for the tenants in Oklahoma who are aware of that and have signed the, I don't know what you call it, the disclosure, the pandemic disclosure, judges rely on that. But landlords are not required to tell their tenants that it's available to them, and judges cannot give legal advice. So for tenants who do not know about this eviction halt, they're still out in the cold right now, maybe not yet, but in process. And landlords are well aware that on January 1 or the next day that the courts open, they can immediately file evictions on all of the tenants who were able to rely on this program to keep them in their homes, at least until December 31. So I think there is going to be a need to re-advertise that program and put more money into that program because it's only going to continue, especially here in Oklahoma when things are not getting any better. And if you're a waiter or a waitress, you had a pretty decent summer, more than likely, as we saw from our bars and restaurants. Might not be so great in the winter months, and we have holidays. Even if you're not going anywhere, if you still have children or family members that you want to send gifts to, this is a really difficult time of year to not have any hope of a stimulus, so.
Also, a longer window when our student population may be returning home from Thanksgiving until, well, January.
Right.
Longer than usual.
So I really, I really like some of what Councilmember Nash put in here. He also had ideas for mask mandate compliance, using some CARES Act for that, reimbursing businesses that want to offer a discount for mask-wearing. You know, kind of the carrot versus the stick idea for mask enforcement because the stick isn't really there. And then I know that Councilmember Patron had some ideas along those lines as well. But I really do want to emphasize supporting small businesses because if we don't, the fact that we're not going to have any stimulus until at least the end of January, if not later, means that the businesses that have been holding on so far may not be able to survive, and the same with the employees who work for them. So I think that's where our priority focus needs to be. I'm fine with holding a little bit of money aside for storm debris removal to make sure that we don't end up in an even deeper spot come summer of next year when we're trying to finalize what we spent in the previous year. But I do think, I do think we need to put this money where it's going to do the most good, and that is in the hands of Norman residents.
What we'll do tomorrow is we'll have Annalise Meyer put together a communication update on the rental and utility assistance funding still remaining and a brief synopsis of the qualifying criteria and get that back out into circulation immediately.
Graphic form is really helpful.
Absolutely.
Patches the eye. I'm sure we'll all share it everywhere.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Maybe one of those awesome videos that Bryson and Annalise do.
Yes.
Kind of a conversation that we can put on a YouTube channel as well.
Yes.
Excellent.
Thanks, Daryl.
Thank you.
All right. I believe this one is you, Councilmember Patron.
All right. I want to start off with Chief Foster. I had the opportunity to catch him in the hall, and we were discussing in the last portion of the meeting, the PSST Oversight Committee sent us a letter recommending that we allocate the remainder of the CARES money to go towards the EOC. And so I wanted a better understanding of what that would buy us if we were to take them up on that idea and break ground tomorrow and let the public understand what that would look like for an EOC facility or whatever you'd like to expound upon.
Yeah, we've got two designs sort of now. One with a hardened structure that's a little bigger that we definitely have to cut down on, and one that has partially hardened structure, which that's your data center and where all your records are kept. That would be hardened. So dispatch wouldn't be hardened in our current model for the six and a half million. And even at the six and a half, we're tight on making that work. So with the additional three or whatever it is, you know, even two of it could probably harden the entire structure, and then we could build the other things or add those as we went. The hardening of the structure, as you talked earlier, like the glass, not really a bulletproof glass, it's a storm glass. It's super thick. And I don't know how you put that, you know, I don't know how it would go into a hardened structure if they don't build it in. It may be more expense to try to add that later. I don't know. But we can definitely talk to them, but, you know, a couple million would allow us to harden the entire structure upfront, which is the biggest thing, I think.
So wouldn't, I guess that'd be an eight and a half million-dollar facility? Would that be ample for what you were envisioning for an EOC?
It would get us in there, and it would be hardened so they would be safe. And as we went, we could get, you know, add the additional dispatch consoles that we need as we get money. It would get us the structure and the basics that we needed. So we could add as we go along then.
Okay, thank you very much. I definitely wanted to get that on the record so that I understood it better. So I too spoke with Councilmember Nash, and we were, you know, brainstorming some ideas. A resident, actually, I can't take credit for this idea. I thought it was a brilliant idea. I'd love to take credit for it, but it's not mine, contacted me about using some of this CARES Act money for mask enforcement. And the idea kind of snowballed into a alleviating Norman PD's calls that they're getting for masks to where it's an actual temp job because one of the problems right now also is that we don't, you know, there are a lot of members of our community who are looking for temp labor, or at least labor, to where plainclothed community members, temporary labor that would go into, they're constantly kind of on the move, going into businesses and documenting what they see, coming back, you know, take a picture with their phone, coming back and dealing with enforcement from the stick end of it here, as well as the carrot side, the Councilmember Nash. His idea, which I thought was great as well, also rewarding, maybe those businesses back for when that individual instead says, you know what, I saw, I was here at this particular time, and every single person that I saw was masked up. And they get a carrot back from the city. So it works both ways. But we've had a lot of community members that are frustrated that they don't feel like the mask ordinance law is being enforced. So that, okay, and then the next idea is, I don't know if any of you all have been, I don't know what the situation is exactly, except for my understanding is that the state has kind of pulled back their funding for testing. And so we're seeing a lot of people that there's a backlog again, and this is exactly the wrong time to be having a backlog that you can't get tested as quickly as you need to be. So I actually made a call to Richie Split, and we had a nice pleasant conversation. And I asked if it would be something that if we were to use some CARES Act funding, could they supplement what Emmy is currently doing? Because it's not Emmy's fault that they've been pulled back, it's state funding. And kind of moving that traffic throughout the city and having more places where people could test. And he absolutely wanted to help in any way possible. Those tests are $65 cost. So, you know, however many we might want to supplement, and, you know, working with the hours versus Emmy versus Norman Regional to make sure that our residents could get tested. You know, I think whether it was that we purchased 10,000 tests or 8,000 tests, you know, something to where this isn't, I mean, this is absolutely COVID money going to COVID. And we cannot be in a situation where our people can't get tested.
Councilmember Patron, on that line of thought, I'd received a communication that there were people who had recognized Emmy as being a walk-in opportunity to receive a test. And they had an exposure and walked into Emmy to be told that now it's appointment only. And I did make contact with Mr. Bowman and said, hey, can you fill me in on what the current situation is? And the day of my call, he indicated that, yes, the state, they were, they were running out of funds, so they were trying to slow down the outgoing funds, make it last a little bit longer for testing. And I said, well, can, I let that marinate overnight. The next day, I contacted him and said, just as an example, how many tests could we account for with a million dollars? Just picking a number so we could kind of get a ratio. And his response was, save your money. The state has now come up with a new allocation of funds from a different bucket, and we expect to be back up into full walk-in mode within about two weeks. So I was relieved. I don't think that means we're out of the woods. I think that gives us a little bit of breathing room. We can exhale since additional state funding has been identified.
Okay, that does make me feel a little bit better. Two weeks is still...
Long time.
The height of what we've seen, and it's not Mr. Bowman's fault by any stretch of the imagination. I just wanted to make sure that if we needed to be allocating emergency CARES money toward, for COVID reason, testing is definitely a reason. By the time that we decide this, I would like to know what, where we stand on the late fees of the water bills.
I think Mr. Francisco has a ballpark number currently.
How much that would be if we were just to take care of our city's late fees on water bills from the shutdown time period?
Okay, so I'm not sure. Are you saying we would just pay everybody's late fee?
I'm not sure. I'm wondering how much is still outstanding for our resident late fees from the shutdown period. If, I've had several people contact me about not knowing how, you know, what they're going to do. So if we were to allocate CARES dollars towards people to get caught back up, what that would look like?
We would have to calculate that, but...
Yeah.
It was a couple of months ago, and I'm trying to remember what the date was, but something jumped, and our delinquencies increased by about $900,000 in a single month. but something jumped, and our delinquencies increased by about $900,000 in a single month. So it is a very large number, and I don't remember what triggered the jump.
When we stopped turning people off.
That's what it was. So we, when all the other utilities said we're not going to disconnect for non-payment, people took full advantage of the opportunity.
To not pay.
Well, I mean, they also didn't have income coming in. So I mean, I think that the signal was, do I pay for food or do I, you know? And we didn't shut their water off, but at the same time, I don't, if we can keep that spiral, I think it's something we really need to be considering up here. These are, that is an emergency for people. And for a lot of people, that is a lot of money to try to get out of that spiral.
And I think that was in August, if I'm not mistaken. I think the electric utilities began normal collection efforts in July, and we followed suit the following month.
Okay, so Mr. Francisco, if you wouldn't mind sending an email out to council to let us know what that number is on residential, or however it's coded, I don't know, but with the late fees that are associated with that and what maybe our options are as a council to allocate some CARES money towards that.
Okay, and again, it's an aging schedule question. But the parameter that you say about since the COVID time, we have a lot of customers who had outstanding bills and penalties before COVID. Are you talking about is just the customers who newly identified late payments since March-ish?
I definitely want that number, but if you want to include both of them, that's fine. Whatever, I mean, you could give us, this is pre-March and this is post-March. In agreement of putting some money aside for the storm debris. And then as well, Mr. Francisco, you made mention of, quote, unexpended allocations from other departments. And I would love to know how much money that is there that maybe we could add to the CARES money to meet some of these challenges. So if you're able to find, I know we've done this song and dance before. Let's second verse, same as the first.
You know, Councilmember Petron, and when Mr. Francisco brought that number up, I do remember where we thought we would be COVID-related at budget adoption time. And honestly, we were assuming back then that OU home games would be normal, and you know, there'd be 85,000 people rolling into town. We also thought that our usual training protocol, and you know, we jump in a car and we go to OKC or Edmund, and we do a training or up in Tulsa. Nobody's doing any of that kind of stuff anymore. So those are the types of dollars we can absolutely wring out of the budget. It's just not going to happen in the current fiscal year. And boy, the things we know now, when we go back and look at our assumptions, I'm very comfortable and confident in Mr. Francisco's revenue estimates. But I think, yeah, the wiggle room we're going to have is definitely on the expenditure side because we're just not operating the way we used to. But, but those are some of the pieces that Mr. Francisco will be able to demonstrate how we can wring those out.
And Mr. Pyle, on the same kind of train of thought, there was, at the beginning of the presentation by Mr. Francisco this evening, closed projects. See if there's any that we can wring out of those tickets as well. If there's money sitting in those accounts, please let us know so that we can allocate to those in need.
Excellent.
Including your city. And I think, I mean, I agree with everything that others have said. The, for the rent, you know, including that, and gig workers, bars and restaurants, all these different things. And then as far, I also got the email about rent for small businesses. And I assume that, you know, it wasn't a heavily detailed email, but it's something I definitely, you know, I mean, there's lots of needs. So I'm not against it by any stretch of the imagination. I would want to make sure that we're not, that those are actually Norman people that, and this email that I got was a Norman person, you know? And I think most of our landlords probably are. But I just don't want it to be some Wall Street REIT that we're sending rent off to. And also that it's not just going to two or three landlords, you know, that that money would be spread out amongst several landlords. So if we're going to have a program that looks like that and that the business is Norman residents and not chains. So that's really the questions that I have, and hopefully you can get back to us with some of the info.
Absolutely.
All right. Councilmember Hall.
So I think I'm going to address the small business relief first, just because we have more concrete information about that. I've probably heard more about this from our small and local business owners than I've heard about anything else, but there have been a lot of, you know, really interesting suggestions thrown out there. But I am in favor in providing some kind of small business relief. I think we have a pretty good document to work from, but I agree with everyone else. I think the circumstances since when we approved this continues to evolve and change. I haven't talked to one small business owner that thought a loan would be useful. It just would create more stress. They definitely, I would say the consensus was something that's simple, easy to understand, you know, what responsible, what they're responsible for, what they're allowed to spend it on. And so I am really focused in as well on the micro grants. I think that's, you know, we don't have as much money as we thought we would have with a $5 million package, and so I think that's the, we would get the most bang for the buck there. And some of the things that have already been mentioned, I think it's critically important that we are focused on our local, small local businesses. And, you know, someone had very eloquently said to me that our small local businesses in Norman are really the heart and soul of part of what makes up our community and what makes people love to live here and support their local businesses. And I think throughout all of this, there have been so many different individuals and organizations who have tried to, you know, promote and emphasize how important it is to support our local businesses. And I think individuals have done that in a lot of creative ways by buying gift cards or, you know, doing, you know, trying to do curbside, making a commitment to, you know, spend X amount of dollars at their favorite local store, that kind of thing. So that's really where my emphasis is. And, you know, we talked a lot about the priority considerations, and that is something that still is really important to me in the framework that we have some kind of rubric or that we rate or rank some of these considerations with, you know, emphasis given to especially those businesses, as Councilmember Bierman mentioned, that for whatever reason did not have a chance to play with PPP or the EIDL or some of the other, you know, things that were out there. Definitely want to give them some priority. And we've talked about our marginalized community, minority-owned entities. I think that's really important, too, that as we prioritize how this is going to go, that we take into consideration really focusing on those that live and work here and really add to the fabric of our community. So that's, that's really how I feel about that. So some of the other things that we've touched on, Mr. Francisco, didn't we allocate some amount of funds on the other end to go back into the emergency fund? Yeah, okay.
About $435,000?
Yeah.
That brings it back up to your preferred comfort level.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we really had done that. So we have checked off that box, which is good. I also think it would be prudent to have a little money set aside until we're clear on the federal funding on the storm debris. The other thing that I've mentioned multiple times, and it's also been brought up, is to make sure we really are confident in our rent and utility assistance. We've asked this question. We've had Ms. Craig weigh in. So as far as I can tell, you know, we do have funding available for that because otherwise that would be something that would be a priority here, too, for me. But I also think it's worth, you know, continually to get an update, make sure that people are really applying. If we're rejecting people because they're not qualifying under that grant bucket, I'd be interested in knowing if there's, if people are falling through the cracks there because that's the other, probably the greatest need that I've heard from our residents is the rent and utility assistance. I love the idea of some kind of positive reward for masking. I think that's great. So, you know, I'm not sure what that would look like, and I've not had the opportunity to review Councilmember Nash's suggestion, but some intriguing possibilities there. I think that's, let's see, the testing piece, I'm really, it's a relief to hear that we might have a little bit of a lag here, but that we're going to continue to, or that ME is going to be able to continue. But I'd like to keep a close eye on that because to me, that's been one of the wins that we've had in our community compared to other parts of Oklahoma and other places in the country where testing has taken so long that it's not even helpful. And I think with the combination of the Cleveland County testing and the ME testing, I don't really want to get behind there, especially at a time like this. So kind of want to keep an eye on that. It sounds like maybe that's going to resolve itself. But I love that our health system could possibly fill in the gap there if we need to do that. So I'm really interested in that piece, too.
So council, what I am hearing, some consistent trends through the conversation is recognition that with the storm damage and the cleanup efforts, while we wait for a federal declaration to hang on to a handful of dollars, might be advantageous. It does sound like there is support for the micro grant program, about $10,000 maximum, based on criteria that council had previously approved to include sole proprietors, all the way up to businesses with up to 35 employees. Dollars could be used for inventory replacement due to the storm and/or paying back rent, getting your utilities current, et cetera. And then some portion of the money available for other local community needs that could include rental assistance, utility assistance, could include some additional funding for more testing or fill in gaps, healthcare-related, generically speaking. Does it sound like if we had a million dollars in each of those three buckets, small business, rental and utility assistance, and then the reserve for the storm cleanup? Are we on the right path for our next step?
We have, well, Councilmember Carter still needs to chat, and I have comments from
By all means.
Councilmember Peacock.
Well, I like that idea. You know, I was just saying, if I remember, the 1% is about 900,000. The delta on our exposure would be about 300,000 or 400,000 if we get the federal reimbursement.
Correct.
So there's our, you know, we definitely need to set aside that money until we know. And then, you know, I think success lies in simplicity. And I think we help our workers by helping our small businesses. And time is of the essence for our small businesses. I want to tell you a quick story about a lady that was an addict for 20 years, spent a year in rehab, got a job, worked at a business for three years, and then ended up buying that business eight years ago. And she closed her doors the end of October. She had PPP money. She had five employees. The PPP money bridged her salaries and helped with the rent and expenses. Her business was closed for two months because it was nonessential. She maintained her employees. She did everything right. Business didn't return to the prior pre-COVID levels, and she closed. If she would have had a micro grant just last month, she would still be open. Those five employees would not be unemployed. So I would, I think the idea of 100 small businesses getting $10,000 grants gives a direct infusion, and to see something like that on our agenda next week would not make me unhappy. We have that, the parameters, we voted on them. It's simple. It's easy. That leaves the 2 million, even for what Councilmember Petron was talking about with the EOC as an option. We start looking at these other programs that you just described, those other buckets, and we see what our response is with the first 100 businesses and gives us some time, but it gives us some immediate relief to people. I can promise you, there are people right now that are trying to decide, do I close my business the end of November and not pay my rent? And the sooner we can give them some hope, the better. But I love the idea.
All right, and I will read Councilmember Peacock's comment. "All of the remaining CARES Act funding should be directed at small business relief grants, and we need to prioritize those businesses most directly impacted by the pandemic. There needs to be a scoring rubric to best identify where to direct the funds instead of a first-come, first-served approach. Points should be awarded for such things as being unable to access federal PPP grants, being locally owned, being minority-owned, suffering additional losses from the ice storm, or needing rent assistance. There should be a maximum cap amount per grant, and for reference, the Oklahoma Business Relief Fund has that amount set at $25,000. I also challenge city staff to find other creative options for assistance, such as utility forgiveness or fee waivers, in an effort to stretch these funds as far as possible." So before my colleagues add any final comments, I think we've had a great discussion, and I think we're pretty much on the same page. And I do support doing at least a million of it now to get people what they need, and then we can wait and figure it out. So I appreciate that sense of urgency. But I do want to point out, and I have the permission to share this, that two councilmembers are not here tonight because they are quarantining because of exposures. And I represent the city of Norman as a whole, but they represent individual wards. So two of eight wards is 25% of Normanites are unable to engage in this conversation because we were required to return to in-person meetings. So I urge you to please contact the state legislature, particularly pro-tem Senator Treet and House Majority Leader Charles McCall, and ask them to call a special session. I understand that they don't have to meet until February 1st, but the one time they have met in the swearing-in ceremony, there were positive cases that resulted in quarantine. Our first meeting back, the entire city of Norman is not represented because the current opportunities to meet virtually in the Open Meetings Act are not sufficient in a pandemic, period. I appreciate the efforts of staff to keep us as socially distanced as possible, to cut down on staff in the room, to mark off chairs, but it's a matter of time before we have to quarantine even further. And again, it's not just about staff or elected officials. It's about the thousands of Norman residents who deserve to be represented in these meetings as we're having crucial conversations that save businesses and save families and essentially save lives in our community. So if you have not already reached out to your state legislators, I urge you to do so tonight. Are there any final comments regarding this discussion? Councilmember Foreman?
I just have one question, Daryl. Do you know how many small businesses we have in Norman? Do you have like a rough number?
Yes, we do. And actually, what I'll do is I'll put you, Ms. Sarah Kaplan, she maintains all of that data for us. And we'll zip you an email first thing in the morning with the exact, what we identified as small businesses that fall into the size criteria. Some of our small businesses have never been more successful than they have been in 2020. It just depends on the nature of your business. But Ms. Kaplan does maintain that data relatively handy.
Councilmember Bierman.
So Councilmember Foreman, I'm going to use this as another plug for a general business license, just a small fee so that we can actually have a clear idea at any point in the process of how many small businesses we have, what kinds of small businesses, in what industries, size, et cetera. Because we don't, we don't have that. But I would really like to be able, for Daryl, to just stand up there and say, here's the list. I would like to ensure, and you know, maybe it was just a catch-all phrase, but when you said $1 million for rent and utilities assistance, I would like to consider some of Councilmember Nash's suggestions of grants aimed at specific types of cost. You know, there might be, there might be people who don't necessarily need, you know, $1,000 or $2,000 for rent and utilities assistance, but their kid drowned their tablet in the bathtub and now can no longer do their schoolwork, as an example. So, you know, I would, I would like to see some additional breakdown of that rent and utilities assistance because there are some really great ideas that the Citizen Potawatomi Nation put together. And I think that these are things that we can include in that to make that particular fund more effective. I would like to see the micro grants capped at 10,000 because my quick calculation is that $1 million with a $25,000 limit
Not many.
Does not go very far. $10,000 goes a lot further. And it might not do everything that everyone needs, but it is certainly better than nothing. And I would hope that we could put enough emphasis on the priority considerations because the third, the we could put enough emphasis on the priority considerations because the 35 or fewer employees makes me a little squidgy. It feels a little high. But if we can focus really strongly on these priority considerations, most businesses that have 35 or more employees received PPP or EIDL. Most of them, not all of them.
More likely to have a solid banking relationship with 35 employees.
Right. Or they didn't need it because they did have a very good 2020. So I, I think I could be okay with 35 or fewer as long as we really do put emphasis on these priority considerations and not just do first-come, first-served with these priority considerations, give an open window to accept the applications, and then go through and score them. Because obviously, the businesses or the business owners that have a closer tie to City Hall, not even a relationship, but just follow the social media pages more frequently or get the newsletters, are going to jump on this faster than others. So I think we're, I think we're in a good spot with this. I do think sooner rather than later would be ideal. I'd love to see this at a place where we could throw it on a consent docket and do it just all at once and get it in and out and get it started. So I think we're very close.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I'll clarify, the general business license was discussed at the retreat, and the model that I had heard of was from the Wichita mayor. And it was, and I wanted to clarify so nobody's panicking about more licensing fees for businesses. This is like $10 a business. It is just to get the list. And then his idea was to use the revenue from the license to fund a small business coordinator where that's all they do is help support small businesses in our community. So I'm glad that's being brought up again. And I'll throw in, again, what Councilmember Peacock suggested. I think, and this was not around in August, one of the priorities has got to be also impacted by the ice storm. That has, that has got to move up in my book and was not considered in August. So-
Brand-new line item in the rubric, too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, the buttons aren't working. So I have Councilmember Petron, Carter, Hall.
So I agree with potentially putting that $1 million aside for the storm, and hopefully that money will get freed up in a few weeks and we can reallocate it back out. I also think what Councilmember Nash had to say was super important, too, and that's something that we can get done. I was just doing some quick math. If you had a team of eight or nine temporary workers, if we just did $100,000 towards that, and then $150,000 for the carrots that you're going to give to these business owners, rewarding them for, you know, being caught with masks. So $250,000 kind of going to that program. And with that eight or nine, basically, I was trying to figure out, you know, the next few months. So that would be 1.25. And then the water bills, late fees, I think that is something that can really touch a large portion of this community that really needs that help. And I don't know that we're going to have another opportunity to do that. So-
With Mr. Francisco's assistance in bringing that number forward, that, that's a, it's a target that, obviously, the impact we watched happen graphically when collection efforts returned. And that will impact a large portion of the population that may not income-qualify under the CDBG program. They may have everything else under control in the one delta they could not achieve. I mean, they may have paid rent, and that delinquent utility account was the last hurdle and probably, you know, the least important thing that may have been on their plate. So you will definitely capture a different segment of the population if we look at it through the utility billing system and, you know, the, what that new delta is. They may have different qualifications than the CDBG income-qualified program.
Okay. I'd just like to see what that number is and what we can do with it.
Absolutely.
And then I agree with the $10,000 micro grant. And I would say that we can just add in the extra criteria of the server bartender, you know, that that population is getting hit, gig workers, sole proprietors. So all of the different areas that you are adding, add those into the same, I mean, they're for all intents and purposes, they are small businesses, they're self-employed, and they've been hit with COVID. So, or due to COVID. So I would say expand that. I'm also a little nervous about that 35 employees. That seems to me like you would be into the area where the federal government should have been opening up those programs to you for the PPP and the EIDL. What was it? I don't remember. Anyway. And then the other one that I would add in there is those who can demonstrate that they're a victim of a backlog of unemployment. So there are a lot of people that the state owes money to, and no fault of their own, they haven't gotten their money. So I would just ask that if we're going to be putting $1 million towards this, that we open it up to, you know, small business owners and, you know, these other kind of independent labor, gig worker type of businesses and jobs, as well as considering the people who have the backlog.
Thank you.
And I'm not saying that every single one of them is going to get $10,000. I don't, public, if you're listening, there's going to be a scale as to what would be appropriate. But I don't think that just people that are, and I am a small business owner, but that just small business owners should be able to partake in this when some people's jobs are not under a brick-and-mortar type of situation.
Understood.
Councilmember Carter?
Just quickly, I wanted to offer the suggestion of having a sunset on this micro loan program, like a window where we revisit it to extend it or not. We can look at it, and I'm going to throw out a 60-day or 90-day, whatever you would think is appropriate. But I wouldn't want it to go for, you know, I think if we, if we're 60 days, I tend to believe that when there's money out there, people figure it out. You know, it's like the rent assistance, maybe people don't know about it, but maybe people don't need it as much as we think either. And we don't know what the needs are. I mean, as a business, an owner of five different businesses that two have failed and three have thrived during the pandemic, there's definitely ones that are doing well and don't need anything, and there are those that need help. And so we don't know until we offer this program, but we don't need to tie that money up forever, you know, to have it tied up for a period of time. And then we say, okay, well, this program satisfied the needs. Let's go somewhere else with it would be something I'd be interested in seeing.
And I would think, Councilmember Carter, that potentially a 60-day window that would provide for a week of strong advertisement indicating these are all the things you're going to need to know to fill out this very simple application, will accept applications during this period of time, and the award will happen, you know, immediately following. I think all those dollars would be put back in the street within 60 days.
Perfect.
Councilmember Hall?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to circle back on a couple of things that I did mention and a few that I omitted by mistake. So I'm pretty comfortable with the three-way division of a million, a million, a million. But I am glad we've clarified a little bit further on the rent and utility thing because, like I said before, you know, according to Ms. Craig and funding that we have available there, which we've, I'm so glad that's already a program that is out there and helping people. I just want to make sure that we're meeting that community need. But I really do like all of the other creative ideas that would fit under that category. So not seeing, you know, that total dollar amount just being a supplement to what we currently all, what we currently have in place. So I see that, that one is much more flexible than the other two.
And Councilmember Hall, in the event that additional funding does not receive an overwhelming response and is fully subscribed within 60 to 90 days, we can bring that back to you to reprogram one of the other two-
Okay.
-allocations.
Yeah. And definitely support the maximum of $10,000 since we're working with a much smaller amount than we had originally intended. And I also get a little uncomfortable with that 35 number because that was not really intended for the micro grant-
Correct.
-category. So in, in that case, again, in the priority ranking system, I would definitely want to be ranking the smaller-
Smaller to larger.
-the business is a higher priority. And if there's more to go around and we bump up to a larger one, then fine. But again, I think that will hopefully take care of itself with also prioritizing those that have not had access to any kind of funding yet. So just want to make sure I was clear about that. And then I did not want to leave the EOC out either because I, as I said already, that, that is a priority project that I think we need to build out as was designed. And if we can be helpful here, great, but I also don't want to make the same mistake with the reduced number of dollars to get it to another phase that's still not going to meet what the needs have been and as they've been defined. So I think we can kind of wait and see there what happens with the storm debris. But I didn't want to leave, I didn't want to leave my support of that project out. It may just not be here.
Your recognition of that as a priority, staff, that is hugely beneficial for staff to recognize where that falls in your priority list.
Okay.
And we will account for that as we move forward in the budgeting process.
Okay. And, you know, also support on the utility side, if that's someplace that we can be helpful. I'd definitely like to learn a little bit more about that.
Absolutely.
Other than that, I think we're pretty common ground here and definitely want to consider more what Councilmember Nash had to say since I haven't really had a chance to look at that. So.
All right. I think we gave you plenty of feedback, and again, mostly all on the same page, but work to be done, but good work. So I appreciate all that you all do. I know that you have been here this whole time when we haven't, and I want to recognize that. So I appreciate you so much. But we're going to wrap it up for tonight and look forward to the laundry list of follow-ups we gave you. Thank you so much, Seaman Andrew Pyle, Director Francisco. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.